Good evening, everyone. We're ready to begin. This Planning Commission is called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open-meeting law. We're live on KCLV, Channel 2, and this meeting will be rebroadcast Thursday at 10:00 a.m., the following Monday at midnight, Tuesday at 5:00 a.m., and Thursday at 6:00 p.m. Would everyone please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Chair Trowbridge.
President.
Vice Chair Truesdale.
President.
Commissioner Buckley.
President.
Commissioner Quinn.
Here.
Commissioner Evans.
Present.
Commissioner Goines.
Present.
Commissioner Buckley. I'm sorry, Commissioner Ellsworth.
Here.
Thank you.
We have a quorum. I call your attention to the information printed in your agenda concerning our actions, and the appeal and review process. If appropriate, please read this carefully, and if you have any questions, staff is available. Also, the second page of the agenda contains our rules of conduct. We appreciate your hearing to these rules so we can have a smooth meeting. Thank you. Okay, is there a motion to approve the minutes of the March 26, 2009 Planning Commission meeting?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the meeting, Planning Commission meeting minutes.
Motion's been made, please cast your vote. Post. Motion carries with one abstention.
Excuse me, Chairman. Mr. Buckley, could you put the...
Oh, Mr. Buckley, would you state why you had to abstain? It was due to absentee...
I was not here.
Completely justifiable. Thank you. Let's move on to our housekeeping items. Are there any items that the commissioners, staff, applicants, or members of the public would like to pull forward for action?
Good evening. Mr. Chairman, item number 15, staff is requesting that this item be held in abeyance to the May 28, 2009 Planning Commission meeting so as to allow for additional neighborhood meetings. Item number 18, number 19, number 20, and number 21, the applicant has requested that these items be held in abeyance to the May 28, 2009 Planning Commission meeting. The representative has not stated a reason. Item number 27, the applicant has requested that this item be tabled so as to allow additional time to work out technical issues. Item number 34 and 35, the applicant has requested that these items be held in abeyance to the May 28, 2009 Planning Commission meeting so the applicant can resolve outstanding issues with the property owners. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone wish to speak on any of these items?
Yes, I'm Katherine Duncan with the Las Vegas Ward 5 Chamber of Commerce, and we'd like to speak on item 15.
Please, go ahead. We will probably obey the item, but we'll certainly take your testimony and put it on the record so that it's part of the permanent record regarding that issue.
Yes, so first of all, we need to know the reason why you're obeying the item. Is there some reason why the item's not being heard tonight?
If I may.
Please.
It's in order to have another community meeting.
And one of the reasons why we're here is we believe that having the community meetings is directly contrary to the APA's recommendations on how we're to proceed with the West Las Vegas plan.
Okay, go ahead.
And so, we're here as a Chamber of Commerce to suggest another method of moving forward with the proposed development plans for this neighborhood. I understand that the City of Las Vegas plans to implement the recommendations from the American Planners Association, and specifically, one of those recommendations was that the city not take the lead on the neighborhood meetings to bring forth the badly needed redevelopment in this community. The APA specifically recommended that an association be formed to bring forth this initiative, and we're prepared to take on, to take the charge. We would like to show the commission, just briefly, some of the projects that we would like to bring forward, and ask that the city accept the recommendations from the APA and not move forward in the manner that is moving.
Well, we'll give you three minutes to make your presentation. We'll take it into consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I think...
Mr. Chairman, it's probably more appropriate to, if you're not going to obey it, or to have her come back on the 28th, because you're not going to vote on anything tonight.
You're, this is, this is your opportunity to make your presentation. You, you make the decisions whether it would be more appropriate for you to make it tonight or on the 28th when the item will be heard.
If I, if perhaps we understood the procedure...
No two bites at the apple.
If, if perhaps we had an opportunity to understand the procedure, because we were told a month ago that this was the procedure, so we went to the public meeting, we gave our input, so, and then things changed in the middle, so we need to know exactly what the procedure's going to be so that we can prepare ourselves.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Please.
I, I attended that neighborhood meeting and am very familiar with some of the issues that came forth, but Ms. Duncan, I don't think it, the APA directs the councilman what to do. They, they are certainly welcome to make a recommendation of how they think it should proceed, but I think what the councilman is doing is holding it again, because at that meeting, there were some concerns about the notice and how the notice went out, and the fact that it didn't go to every resident in Ward 5. So I think what the councilman is doing is, is a little bit of due diligence, probably to expand that notification area so that more people can be included at that neighborhood meeting. What I would suggest is wait for that neighborhood meeting, bring your concerns back, and/or call the councilman's office prior to that meeting, and you may be able to discuss some of those recommendations that the APA has, and who knows? I can't speak for the councilman or his staff. They may be willing to include some of those into the plan, but, but I don't think it's proper for the APA to, to direct what's going to go on in Ward 5, and, and that's all I'll say on that.
And, and I agree with you, and, and we're not trying to suggest that the APA direct the city council, but we were told at the last public meeting that the reason we were there was so that the city council would adopt the APA's recommendations for moving forward, and...
And it could very well be adopted, again, after that next neighborhood meeting, and it will come back to this agenda, and the council and staff may well include those recommendations in there, but I would suggest you have that discussion with the councilman in his office prior to that meeting.
So my next question is, is there an opportunity for a Chamber of Commerce to suggest activities and projects to the Planning Commission before it gets to the city council? Is there an opportunity for us to do that as a Chamber of Commerce so that we don't maybe have to... Go, go ahead, go ahead.
Sure, absolutely. Any group is willing to attend the meeting and speak on behalf of themselves as individuals or as a group, and we would appreciate your input at the public meeting.
But there's no opportunity to do it with staff prior?
We'll have to ask Director Wheeler, I will tell you.
Certainly.
I imagine they would, of course, there's no prohibition.
Make an appointment to meet with staff, you can do that, and again, we'll have the meeting on April 30th, which is another opportunity to provide...
So will we have an opportunity to come into your office then and sit down with you before the April 30th meeting?
Call my office, you can certainly set time to do that.
Thank you, we appreciate that.
I think that door is always open to citizen input.
Thank you.
Okay, having, anyone else wish to speak on any of the other items?
Kasili Shihavich, Design Cell Architects, speaking on behalf of item 27, would write to, we have submitted a request to table item just a, two, couple days ago, and we would like to withdraw that request to table that item, and we wish the item to be heard today, because we were able to make some decisions with the owner regarding the property. We'd like to proceed with the hearing with this item.
Because the request had been received, are you, would you be ready to proceed on 27?
Yes, we would.
Okay, then we will. Thank you, we'll hear, when we get there. Okay, I guess a motion's now in order.
Before you make the motion, just for my own clarification, Mr. Lowenstein, can you give me the numbers again real quick? What we're obeying?
Sure. Item number 15 is requested to be obeyed till the May 28, 2009 Planning Commission. Items number 18, 19, 20, and 21 has been requested to be obeyed to the May 28, 2009 Planning Commission meeting. Item number 27, which has just been rescinded. Item number 34 and 35...
The 27 is going to be heard tonight.
Correct.
Okay.
Item 34 and 35, that has been requested to be obeyed to the May 28, 2009 Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you.
That's it, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move that these items, except for item 27, be brought forward and, as requested by staff.
Thank you. Motion's been made, please cast your votes. Post. Motion carries. Before we start our one motion, one vote items, I would like to advise everyone in attendance, and even those watching on TV at home, that the Planning and Development Department is conducting a survey on how we are doing, and I would invite those in attendance to pick up a card that's over on the right-hand side of the DIAS, and complete it before you leave. It's a simple little card, and those at home can participate by email to PDSservice@lasvegasnevada, one word, dot gov. We'd appreciate your input. Okay. Now we move on to the one motion, one vote. The following items are items that may be considered in one motion, one vote. They are considered routine, non-public, and public hearing items. All public hearings and non-public hearings will be opened at one time. Any person representing an application or a member of the public or a member of the Planning Commission not in agreement with the conditions and all standard conditions for the application recommended by staff should request to have that item removed from this part of the agenda. Those items are going to be items 6 through 12, and I will, for the record, read them. Item number 6 is in abeyance, it's a re-notification of a variance 33415. The applicant is Ahearn Rentals. The owner is DFALC, to allow a 10-foot-tall wall where 8 feet is the maximum height allowed along a portion of the north and east boundary property line, to allow unfinished block wall where decorative block with 20 percent contacting materials is required at 1726 West Fernando Road. Note, this application is being amended to include the addition of an 8-foot-high wrought iron fence along the south perimeter where 5 feet is the maximum allowed. Item number 7 is an RQR 32951. The applicant is Clear Channel Outdoor. Owner is Decatur Car Care Associates for a 50-foot-tall, 14-foot-by-48-foot off-premise sign at 2003 South Decatur Boulevard, Ward 1. Item number 8 is RQR 32956. The applicant is Lamar Central Outdoor. The owner is Paramount Investments Company for a 40-foot-tall, 12-foot-by-24-foot off-premise sign at 3227 Mead Avenue. Item number 9 is RQR 32966. The applicant owner is Stansberry Construction, Inc., for a 40-foot-tall, 14-foot-by-20-foot off-premise sign at 3052 South Valley View Boulevard. Item number 10 is SUP 33730. The applicant owner is Little Chaim 24 Fremont LLC for a beer-wine-cooler off-sale establishment at 24 Fremont Street. Item number 11 is Special Use Permit 33731. The applicant owner is Little Chaim Western Village Properties LLC for a beer-wine-cooler off-sale establishment at 321 Fremont Street. And item number 12 is Vacation 33722. The applicant owner is Clark County School District. It's a petition to vacate a 15-foot-wide portion of 25-foot Bureau of Land Management grant easement generally located west of Eagan Crest Drive and north of Severance Lane. I will be voting on all of these items with the exception of item number 6, because I have an exist and ongoing relationship with Lamar Central Outtipping, Lamar Central Outdoor in conjunction with a political campaign. All these items are declared open at the same time? Number 8? Oh, I'm sorry, number 8. Item number 8 is the one involving Lamar. I apologize. Anybody, the public hearing is now declared open. Anyone wish to speak on any of these items? Please approach the microphone and give your name for the record.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. On items, Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. On items 7, 8, 9, are they keeping the signs nice?
Yes, sir, that's the only reason they're on the 1-plus-1 agenda.
Thank you. Any other discussion? No one else wish to speak on these items? I'll declare the public hearing closed and turn it over to the planning commissioners for possible motion.
Mr. Chairman, move that items 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, and 12 be approved per staff's conditions.
Motion's been made, please cast your vote. Post. And the motion carries with the recognition of my abstention on number 8, please.
Item 6 is final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days. Items 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, and 12 will go forward to the city council on May 20th.
Thank you. We, I would like to advise, just this one time, when you approach the microphone to speak on a particular item, if you would be so kind as to, to print your name for the record so that the city clerk has an accurate spelling, there should be a sheet of paper down there before each microphone where you could write the, the information down. We just appreciate it. I'm assuming we're getting to number 13. Okay, now we declare the public hearing items. Item number 13 is an item that was held in abeyance. It's, it's a variance 33369. The applicant owner is Marcia De Guille, to allow a proposed 4,875-square-foot accessory structure, Class 2, where 1,325 square feet is the maximum site allowed, to allow for a proposed accessory structure, Class 2, not to be aesthetically compatible metal with the principal dwelling unit, and to allow the proposed accessory structure, Class 2, to be 24 feet in height where a height of 18 feet is, is permitted at 5921 Mellow Avenue. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the variance is preferential in nature, as the applicant has chosen to propose an accessory structure that exceeds the allowable square footage by 3,550 square feet, as well as the height of the main building by 2 inches, and is an aesthetically, is not aesthetically compatible to the primary residence. As such, the hardship is self-imposed, and staff is recommending denial. Staff would like to add the following condition, if approved. All developments shall be in conformance with the site plan and landscape plan date-stamped 4/21/09, and building elevations date-stamped 4/23/09, except as amended by conditions herein. Please note revised elevations, as well as an updated staff report containing notes from the neighborhood meeting held on April 21st have been placed in your backup packets. Furthermore, additional letters of protest have been received after the publishing. Thank you.
Thank you. Like to declare the public hearing open now, and anyone in attendance wish to speak, please approach the microphone and give your name for the record.
Hello, I'm Marcia Guille, resident at 5921 Mellow Avenue. I did have the neighborhood meeting on Tuesday night. I only had a couple of attendees, one couple, one other gentleman. I believe they were from the Carson Ranch Development to the south of me. One of the concerns still seemed to be the heights, as Mr. Lowenstein indicated. I've submitted a new plan. I hope I didn't butcher your name. Okay, good. I submitted a new elevation plan tonight. I worked with the architects after the neighborhood meeting, said exactly how low can we get this roof? I need to be 18, right on the money, and I'm within 2 inches of it at this point. So I have dropped it almost 6 full feet from my initial application. That is taking my pitch down to a half inch per 12. So it's an almost-flat roof. I can't get any flatter and have any drainage, and I'm pretty well stuck with that height to have a 14-foot door, the roll-up can, the purlines, and start my roof. Okay, I have a picture here of the back wall that is the Carson Ranch Development wall that backs up to mine, so you can see that there is approximately 3 feet. Those are not in your backup package. Approximately 3 feet plus another couple feet visible on the side piece here. One of the issues has been the metal building. I'd like to go ahead and address that metal buildings are very, very common in my area. Steel roofs are quite common. Councilman Ross's liaison brought up concern about noise, and then she referenced tin. This is not a tin roof, it's a steel roof with insulation. This is the house immediately to the east of me. You'll notice it has a steel roof. I can vouch as a neighbor whose driveway is right next to this house. I do not hear the rain or the wind particularly against this roof. I hear more against my horse corrals. This is their backyard where you can see the remains of the construction business that they were running back there. That truck has been abandoned. I'm not sure of the procedure to get that out of there at this point, but it appears to be a foreclosure. They moved out in the middle of December. As I continue through some pictures, I snap, these are all within a half mile of my residence. This is the neighbor to the west of me. These are his horse corrals where he's been boarding. He has anywhere up to 4 horses at a time. This is continuing down Mellow, approximately a quarter mile. This is one of the steel barns that's very, very common for the horse world. A little bit further down the street, you see another large structure with steel. Now, I am looking to do a solid color. Councilman Ross's office asked me if I would consider doing a roof other than galvanized. I'm looking into doing it white. It looks like that will be a possibility. This is down at the end of Mellow, looking towards Deer Springs. Clearly visible, all of these pictures are visible from the street. This is continuing down Bradley, just a little bit south. I'm not even to Anno yet, which is less than a half mile. I have 2 of them from that view, 2 different barns. This is on Anno, so this is behind me, slightly to the southeast. Another steel roof on their residence. They also have a windmill with solar panels, and I will say that the noise off a windmill is significantly more than what I've heard off rain on a steel roof. We have no objections to it in the neighborhood. We like green power, but I'm pointing out, that is noisy. Continuing down Bradley, going a little bit north, you can see another steel structure here. Not arguing the height at all. They have a 2-story house there as well within their height. I'm pointing out that more metal buildings. I think I've hit that point.
You made your point, I believe.
Are there any other questions for me here?
You almost killed the green energy initiative.
I don't want to do that!
Not at this point, but I'll ask, if anyone else in the audience wishes to speak on this item, please come forward at this time. Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed and turn the matter over to the planning commissioners for discussion and possible action.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
I, I'm driven by the property. I've looked things over. I was going to be at a meeting with, the, the meeting on Tuesday, I just couldn't make it there for various reasons, but I, I think you've done a good job at minimizing the negative impact. I think you've done a good job at consulting with the neighbors and so forth, and so I support your project. I think this would be a, a good addition to your neighborhood.
Thank you.
You're not running an electrical business out of there?
No, I am not.
Okay.
I have no intention...
Strictly residential?
Strictly residential.
Thank you.
Ms. Gallow, would you please turn your exhibits into the city clerk so it becomes a permanent part of the record?
The pictures, absolutely. They have a set of the drawings.
Mr. Chairman, the, the backup, if I may?
Please.
The, the backup indicates some letters of support that the applicant has, but there also appear to be a number of people who have filled out protests for this, and I'm curious about the immediate neighbors and who is most impacted by this. The neighbors on all sides, have they agreed with this? And the other issues that I have are, it's, part of my concern is that it's so much larger than what the, the code allows, but the other issue is the material and the appearance of it, and how it could be screened otherwise. Typically, I think I would find a great deal more support in the neighborhood, and I would have a greater degree of comfort if there were some sort of material that could be put around the structure in order to allow it to blend in with the home, because you've shown us a number of illustrations of people who have buildings, most of which look pretty bad to me, but I don't think that's a good argument for approving yours because other people have it. I, I would venture to say that some of them probably are not properly permitted, or perhaps they were built long before the code anticipated some of this, but you're seeking to build, I'm trying to look at the, almost 5,000-square-foot structure where 1,325 is allowed. I, I'm assuming it's a horse barn or something of that nature?
It's a combination-use facility or barn. I'm calling it a garage slash barn. I want to build, put my 2 fifth wheels, my horse trailer, I've got a little box trailer right now. I want to get those all in out of the weather. I want to build a 2-stall barn, a tack room, a grain room, and a grooming area, plus put my exercise equipment in there with the swamp coolers. I'm looking to build 1 building, because as soon as I build even just the garage, which I was trying to figure out the measurements on that, and as long as I wanted to make it to be able to put the truck in with the trailers, I'm over my size right there without even talking about my horse barn. So I'm wanting to do it economically, do it once. Now, you asked about my immediate neighbors. I have gotten the immediate neighbors that I could immediately on board. I met with Mr. Poole, who is the one that alleged the contracting business. He told me if I could get it down to 18 feet, he would not block me. He was agreeable with me building it once it was down to 18 feet, and I put trees in. Now, that is a verbal, I don't have anything written from him on that.
And he is your immediate neighbor?
He owns the property immediately west of me. He does not live in the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? If not, I think we're ready for a motion.
Well, I would, one other, one other concern. Is there any way that perhaps you can plant something around the structure itself? I'm thinking like Cat's Claw or some kind of, I mean, you're looking to build a 5,000-square-foot accessory structure made of metal?
Yes, sir.
Which concerns me. I, I think if it's visible from your neighbors, it could be somewhat of an eyesore. If you planted a sufficient number of trees and, and/or landscaping around it, ivy climbing up at Cat's Claw, something, to give it less of an industrial appearance, I certainly would, would be a lot more comfortable in supporting it, but you're asking for a huge variance.
Yes, sir, I am.
And I want to make sure that all of the people who are most impacted by this are okay with it.
I have already got a tree plan in there. I've agreed to go to 36-inch box trees instead of 24, which is what planning had originally asked me for. I am perfectly agreeable with planting some sort of climbing vine. I'm worried on the west wall that they'll get baked too much, but I'll certainly give it my best effort. The south wall, I believe I can...
Cat's Claw grows in incredible heat. You just have to water it from time to time.
That I will be doing, because I'm going to keep those trees alive.
Commissioner Evans, if I may, Mr. Chairman. In speaking with the applicant, Commissioner Evans, here's what she ended up doing. First of all, that building's tucked away. It, it's in the back of her property, and so very few people are going to see that. Those who are, are close to it, it's the backyards of other properties who have the big brick walls, so there aren't going to be many people that are going to see it. And in addition to that, she's already agreed to plant some, some greenery around the building to pull it away from the walls a bit, to give it some more aesthetically pleasing appearance on those areas that can be seen. So I, I, I fully respect what you're saying, and, and in a perfect world, I'd love it to be the exact same exterior that her home is. That way, it, it all looks nice and it's harmonious, but, but I know that in, in these times, it's tough financially to, to do that. I know, because I added on and, and put a garage on my own, and it, it is extremely expensive, and, you know, metal building, yeah, in a perfect world, that's not what we'd want, but I think you've done your best to minimize it, and so I, I think she had, the applicant, has gone to, to significant measures, or at least sufficient measures to get there, and, and Commissioner Quinn's has pointed out, she also agreed to lower the building even more so, so the impact with the, the neighbors is going to be even less. So I, I see your point, I respect it, I agree with it. At the same time, I think she's gone far enough to get my vote anyway, in, in making it a more comfortable environment for the neighbors.
Thank you.
But, but my, once again, I want to make sure that all of the neighbors who surround this are in agreement with it.
Okay. And Commissioner Evans, the issue is that the Carson Ranch has not finished selling the 9 lots against that back wall. The wall that is approximately 9 feet tall on my side currently, those lots are still vacant.
But, but the ones that are occupied, you've already gotten signatures of those. That's in our mature, right? And that's, that's the, you've gotten, I think you had like 28. I saw there were many of them that had already signed off and approving it.
Correct.
So no one, no one who is immediately impacted by this is opposing it?
The only opposition was Mr. Poole, and I've met with him and come to terms.
He's the one that, if it reduces to the 18 feet, he was okay with it?
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much. And would you consider the Cat's Claw or some...
Yes.
...trailing vine or something?
Absolutely.
Drought tolerant? Okay, thank you.
I think it's a great idea myself as well.
So do I.
But, not wanting to make it a condition, I'll move for approval of item number 13 with all of staff's recommendations and, and conditions.
If I may, the, in addition to the 2 changes that Mr. Lowenstein read in, condition number 2, based upon the applicant's testimony, would be that the... number two, based upon the applicant's testimony, would be that the perimeter trees, as shown on the plan, would be 36-inch box and not 24-inch box. And also that the condition should read, an additional condition, that the maximum building height shall be 18 feet 2 inches, and that the roof shall be of insulated steel construction.
And do you agree with those?
Yes, absolutely.
So with that, I'll make my motion.
Thank you. Motion's been made. Please cast your votes. Motion carries.
And that'll be final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
Thank you.
Thank you. We now move to item number 14, which is a, an abeyance, ROC 33625. The applicant is the Siegel Group. The owner's is Plug It In To LLC and Gold Spike Holdings LLC to leave. Condition number 19, which requires the removal of the southernmost driveway along the Las Vegas Boulevard, and to construct the northernmost driveway to downtown Centennial Plan Standards at the northwest corner of Ogden Avenue and Las Vegas Boulevard. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, staff finds no substantial justification to support this request, however can support the conditions of approval if approved. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to declare the public hearing open now. Those in attendance wish to speak on the matter, please approach the microphone and give your name for the record.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'm Tabitha Fittiman, 3800 Howard Hughes Parkway. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. With me is Kristen Newman of Aptis Architecture, and Paul Chavez with TCE Engineering, if you have questions appropriate for their consideration. Commissioners, the SDR for the renovation of the existing Gold Spike and Travel Inn properties was approved last October. The site plan that we submitted to staff, and the site plan we presented to you, looked exactly like this, the site plan that's on the overhead, which reflects all existing onsite improvements, including this driveway here. Unfortunately, we missed a condition of approval requiring the removal of this driveway, which is the reason we're here today. As we represented at that hearing in October, our intention is to renovate the existing buildings, and if you've been to, driven by the Gold Spike or been into it, the renovations are well underway. We're awaiting the right time to completely redevelop the assembled parcels that we have there. But in the meantime, like I said, we're, our intention is to renovate and to improve the existing buildings and to operate them in a much more desirable manner than they are today. Removal of the driveway would require a complete change to on- and off-site circulation, removal of parking spaces, which we're short of already, and also additional off-site improvements. We did meet with your traffic engineers, and we are completely in agreement with the condition requiring us to remove that driveway upon receipt of a letter from the traffic engineer attesting that it has become a public safety concern. So with the imposition of that condition, we would respectfully request your approval.
Thank you. I'd like to declare the public hearing open now, or it is open. Anyone else wish to speak, please approach the microphone.
Thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. My problem with Siegel is that these people cannot be trusted. I mean, we ask them, I don't know how many times, to get those banners down off their, off their facilities. And you drive around the town, and they're still there. I mean, it seems like they ignored our code enforcement, they ignore our pleas, so, and then they come asking for an abeyance. And I just think that takes a lot of guts.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing none, we'll declare a public hearing closed and turn the matter over to the planning commissioners for discussion. And I, sorry, but I just noticed the, one of the involved parties is the Siegel Group, so I will abstain due to a relationship involving a political campaign, so I'll sit out this particular vote.
Commissioner Evans? Yeah, I just want, so, so what you're saying, Ms. Fittiman, is you have two driveways here?
Mm-hmm.
And they're going to stay there? And if, the way I read condition 19, if the city sees that, once this is built out, that these, one, one of those driveways is causing a problem with traffic, you have no problem removing it?
Absolutely, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Evans?
I'm still confused. Maybe I need Public Works to help me with this. Condition 19, when we approved it, I think, basically said what? Can Public Works help me? And then, the way I'm reading this is that if we approve it, it's contingent on the traffic engineer determining that it's not a public safety problem. Is that the gist of it? I mean, it seems kind of like we have the cart backwards here. Why wouldn't we determine whether or not it's a problem before we approve or deny?
Commissioner, thank you, and Chairman, through you, Vice Chairman. Original condition 19 just called for the closure of the, the southernmost driveway unconditionally, just close it. Upon further discussions with the applicant subsequent to that condition, we made the determination that it is in fact not a safety hazard at this time. So we are willing and, and agreeable to leaving it open right now with the caveat, and that's condition number two, that if, at any time we do determine that it is a safety hazard, we can close it, and they will agree to do so. But at this time, we, we have made the determination that it is not a safety hazard.
What, what would make that change? I mean, isn't it kind of crazy to say, when it's a hazard, then we'll impose the condition? Or make it, I'm lost.
If I may, right now, there is no accident history. There is no record of pedestrian, auto conflict. So right now, there is no history of any conflict with this driveway. So it is not a safety concern in that respect. If ever there was a safety concern, if ever there were any conflicts, any accident history developed, we would reserve that right to close it at that time, and they would agree to do so. But at this point, it has been operating for many, many years, and has no accident history at all.
Then how did the condition get imposed to begin with?
When you're redeveloping a site, there are certain access, there are desirable access conditions, and having driveways that close to corners are less desirable now than they were in the past. So we saw an opportunity, since they were re, you know, doing an SDR, Site Development Plan Review, to go ahead and close that, just kind of, because that's our, we'd like to see that happen. But at this time, there's no compelling reason to do so. So we had asked them to do so, and we still think that closing driveways that close to an intersection is a good idea, but in this case, they have come in and asked, demonstrated there's no accident history. We did evaluate it and determined that in fact it has not been a safety hazard to this point. So rather than just a, here's our policy, buy the book, close this driveway, we're willing to say, it can remain operational unless it becomes a problem. Does that help?
Thank you. Commissioner Ellsworth?
Now, is that in the sole discretion of the city?
Yes, the city traffic engineer.
Okay.
If there are no other comments? I want to thank the applicant, they did send me a drawing that I asked, and if nobody saw it, it was showing-
I have it.
The impact of what would happen parking wise. When this came before us before, it concerned me because of the acceleration point coming out of that driveway, going south, and the safe zone of the handicap ramping, which is older slopes and as it is. I'd like to say, the Gold Spike has, the renovation's going great. I was over there, actually spent about 20, 30 minutes before the meeting today, walking this issue, and they're doing a great job. It, it looks great, there's new life there. The driveway's still a concern to me. And that's, I understand what staff and the engineers are saying, it's just, I usually don't have a problem with driveways this close to the corner, but this is one that I think might be a little too close, but I think they're, so far, I want to say, they, they've been doing what they said they're doing on this project, they're renovating, and they're creating a new life downtown, so I have no other comment. Any other motion?
Mr. Chairman, move for approval of item 14, ROC 33625, subject to all staff's And that is approved with Commissioner Shorebridge abstaining.
Thank you very much.
And that is final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
Great, thank you. Thank you again.
I moved item number 16 and companion item number 14. 16 is a general plan amendment, 33746. The applicant owner is Daniel Shannon from NPR Rural Neighborhood Preservation II, Low Density Residential, at the southeast corner of Florane Avenue and Tomcic Street. Item number 17 is a zone change, 33747, from RE Residential Estates to R1 Single Family Residential. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the request here is to create four residential lots. Staff finds that the general plan amendment and the rezoning not to be compatible nor harmonious with the surrounding land development in the area. Staff also notes that the density of 3.78 units per acre exceeds the 3.59 units per acre in the interlocal agreement between the City of Las Vegas and, and Clark County, Nevada, and therefore, staff recommends denial of this request.
Thank you. Now I'd like to declare the public hearing open and invite anyone in attendance wishing to speak on the matter, approach the microphone and give your name for the record, sir.
Good evening, Commissioners, and Mr. Chairman. Thomas Helms, Dwyer Engineering, 7330 Smoke Ranch Road, on behalf of the applicant. I have some handouts for the Commissioners. The request before you is, is for, for lots, and we're looking for an RD lots, and the RD requires a couple of qualifications, one of which, which is the, the density requirement and the minimum square footage. From my, from my overhead here, you can see that the, the original gross acres of this property was 1.43 gross acres. So with that ratio there, we have 2.8 units per acre, which is well under the general plan requirements of the 3.59. That's one of the things we wanted to bring before you. In, in the staff reports, clearly, they, they bring up the 3.59 gross acres, and the applicant believes that's the intent of that density requirement.
Not to, not to, I, I'm trying to understa, do, I don't think we calculate things on gross acres, staff, do we?
No, no, we do not, and-
So I just didn't want us to get off track in that regard.
And the other issue is, once the streets are dedicated, what the acreage used to be is no longer the issue before us.
I understand that, but when a developer comes in and buys a 40-acre tract, you don't subtract the dedications of the streets and give him a density, he goes for a density on the entire parcel.
Again, these streets are already dedicated.
Well, later on, he does dedicate the streets at that time, but he gets a, he gets a lot count based on the overall gross size of the parcel.
Please, please continue.
Thank you. The majority of the parcels in this area of the city are, are zoned RE, in this area of the city, east, south, and west of the area are not RE parcels. They're R1 parcels. You can see down here, these over, these over in this area are real close to the RD zoning, they average about that 11,000 square feet. All these, all these parcels down here and over here, they're not RE parcels, so we wanted to bring that up to, to the staff. The applicant believes that an RD parcel, this, this parcel RD would be a good buffer between the north parcels up here that are in the county, the parcels due west, which are in the city, the R1 parcels here, between the RE parcels to north, and between this church that's on the east side. We all know that, you know, RE zoning is pretty much a default zoning, and the, the reason for that is, you have to have large lots at that time, because there's no utilities. That was the whole purpose of the RE zoning. You know, you, with, with, with no utilities, you have to put in wells and septic, so you need a lot of property for your presence. Right now, this property is fully developed. There's water and sewer right to the site. What we're requesting is 152-foot-long lots, they're 77 feet wide, and they will support a buildable area of approximately 5,500 square feet. That's a 5,000-square-foot house, one story, and 10,000-square-foot house, two story. These are, these would be large lots. From the staff report, we noticed that 275 notices were mailed out, and only three protests came in. To me, that means 99% of the people that received those notices are in favor or have Just had a, this is, this is an example of one of the, the homes that the, the owner's looking at. Just wanted to bring that before the, the Commission, and be happy to answer any questions.
May I ask one question, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. Go ahead.
If I heard you correctly, you indicated you're applying for RD zoning?
Well, we, because of the, the staff's recommendations, we did have to go to R1, but the intent is for RD zoning, that's correct.
What is your application? Because your letter is requesting R1. Are you changing your application this evening?
We would like to go to the RD, that's correct.
And Mr. Chairman, through you, in order to go to the RD zoning, the proposed 70, lot width does not meet the RD zoning, nor does it meet the density for RD, hence the request for R1. If the applicant wishes to reduce the number of lots to three lots at this time, that would be permitted under the RD zoning. Four requires R1.
So what is the, the application for? Is it for three lots or four lots?
This is for four lots.
Then it's R1.
Then it's R1 is what you're asking for. Okay, I see there's other people in attendance who would like to speak on this item, please approach the microphone and give your name for the record, and sign the sheets if you would, and we've got two microphones, so we could probably speed the-
Charlie Howell, 4061 North Tomcic. I live just 200, 200 yards from where this is going to the west. I don't know what world he's in, but all of it is, is half-acre lots around there, and this does not fit at all. We're, all of us are against it. And I don't know where he got the three people that are against it. He must have sent them outer space somewhere or something, because all of us are against it. We never received anything from them, and they never sent us nothing for the annex into the city, too. That was county, somebody, the annexed into the city, we never got nothing on that.
Did you indicate your, what was your street address again, sir?
4061.
What street?
Flor, uh, Tomcic. I'm just 200 yards from, I got the little cul-de-sac right there.
Thank you. Got your point. Sir?
Good evening. My name's Ron Petroni. I'm here on behalf of Karen L. Petroni. Can I see? Wasn't this one, it's the, yeah, you see the whole area.
Can we get your address for the record?
My physical address is 3905 Diamond Ridge Street. It's not there, but what I'm pointing to is the fact that, he pointed out all this buffering, but he left out the fact that my one-acre lot, that I want to build my retirement home, is right in the middle of everything he wants to put, right up against it. During the previous meeting, the public meeting that he had out at the park, off the Lone Mountain, whatever, there was indication that after they do this, they want to make it six lots, not four. You know, I can understand where Trophy Homes came in and did what they did as an actual buffer to Alexander, if you want to call it a buffer. Those were supposed to be half-acre, but they were able to reduce those. If they put four to six lots against my lot here, you know, that's really damaging the value of my lot. I mean, that, you know, unless the guy wants to buy me out at my price, I, you know, no way. You know, Daniel Shannon and I did talk a while ago about making a cul-de-sac out of the whole two and a half and putting four houses on it. Now he's going on on this, and I just, I totally do not agree with it, because it's just going to completely box me in, it will really devalue my property, it's going to devalue the whole area. This whole area has nothing to do with four- This whole area has nothing to do with four to six homes on an acre. I mean, when you're looking at all this. So I just wanted to bring that up. You know, for me, I'm just totally against it. It will really put a hardship on us and the plans that we have to build, you know, a nice home on that full-acre lot. So, you know, I did notice that he kind of left out that that little piece there is going to be severely impacted by that, so I just wanted to make that a point. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, name and address for the record if you would please.
Lancelot Davis.
Would you leave that on there?
4125 North Tomsek. And I'm the next cul-de-sac over, and I'm representing the three cul-de-sacks there. I've lived out there 25 years, and I've been in many battles over those years with the Far West Home Orders Association, and we finally had a peace conference. We sat down, we talked, we shook hands, and we made an agreement. We believe you. We still believe you. We did away with our group. We say we don't need the Far West Home Orders Association because it's settled. We gave up things, the governments gave up things. We gave up that buffer area. That's what it is, a buffer area. I'm right next to it. I love my home. I love where I am. I've lost many things. I used to be able to see the Milky Way at night. I can't, okay? We helped stop lights from coming into that area, and they stopped it. That is a wonderful area, and it's needed for our community to have a place where someone can go and have a horse. Please protect it.
Thank you, sir. Next, name and address for the record if you would.
Ron Schlesky, 4165 Tomsek. I've lived in the neighborhood almost 18 years. We have tried to maintain the integrity of the area of half-acre estates as long as I've been there. And also, now the lot right across the street from this proposed area is an acre-and-a-quarter lot, and I'm not sure how those people are going to want to have six homes or even four homes facing an acre-and-a-quarter lot right across the street. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, name and address for the record.
Rob Morgan, 4071 North Tomsek. I'm the lot directly west of this. I think everyone pretty much understands that we want to keep these lot sizes the size they are right now, and that's it. No six houses.
Thank you. And you, sir?
I'm Jim Donahue. I live at 4195 Tomsek. That's the next cul-de-sac over. I'm also a director of the sometimes existent Northwest Citizens when we choose to erect it. It's more of an nowadays that would still exist. Still has a big bank account, actually. Basically, I was a participant in establishing the Trophy Homes. That was our classical battle as we set the boundary conditions on the RNP area. We went through that. We had a deep, hard negotiation, and we agreed to a reasonable density on that 300-foot border strip along Alexander. That was fought out and agreed to. The Northwest Citizens actually supported that particular project when it was put forth initially because it had been pre-negotiated. We'd gone through it with everybody. It was very nicely done. As you get past that, however, we have drawn a hard line, and we particularly thought we had put a stop to this odd custom of moving a parcel to the city and then attempting a run-around the zoning codes. This parcel was clearly in the county. Somehow or the other, got to the city. By the way, apparently, nobody was noticed. The city representative at our little neighborhood meeting had agreed to figure out why no one was noticed of the annexation. We're not even sure there's a requirement. We think there is, but no one seemed to know. So we are concerned about that, by the way. This was clearly the start of the standard, old-fashioned run-around we used to do and used to fight about all the time. Now, when we got into the interlocal, we stopped this stuff, but here comes a new one. So I suggest this guy shouldn't get anything but what he had in the county. I would suspect the county had an opinion on this one, someone might ask. But also, this was a two-acre, this was a two-house parcel. I suggest it should be zoned at nothing better than a two-house parcel, which is where it started out in the county, and we should avoid moving these things to higher densities when you move from the county to the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am, I think you're last, if you...
Last but not least, huh? Marcy Cherick, 4051 North Tomsek. Our home is in the cul-de-sac where there are the three lots, just directly next to the Petroni lot where he wants, Mr. Petroni wants to build his retirement home. It's definitely not compatible with the neighborhood. I was glad to get an email from Kim, Larry Brown's assistant, that said they had put out a letter of non-support because of that interlocal agreement between city and county. Are you guys, you're aware of that, right, when those are put out?
If I may, the staff report indicated that this is not within the agreement, and the staff indicated that we are recommending denial.
Okay. When you look at the map, it doesn't do any justice for our homes because you see the other closer-built homes there, but definitely, it's, when you drive up to the neighborhood, it is not compatible to be in there, and it just made me sick to my stomach to think if they were going to put four and six homes there. I mean, you just go, where would they be? And to box in Mr. Petroni's property, I mean, it's unethical and irresponsible, and thank you for listening to us.
Thank you. Mr. Farlow, you'll be the last, I believe.
Yes, thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th. Could staff explain the preservation tag that they have on this? Is that to preserve it for horse property? What does that entail? It says it's rural neighborhood preservation, and that's, I just wanted somebody to explain that, please.
This is located within the interlocal agreement between the city of Las Vegas and the county in order to provide for a rural preservation area. The city has agreed to review items as they are part of that, and hence our recommendation of a denial in supporting that interlocal agreement to preserve it as a rural neighborhood preservation area. And that's large lots with minimal street improvements.
Thank you. I'd like to give the applicant as much as three minutes to respond to the comments or not.
Yeah, we planned to build four lots and not six or anything else, and the reason for was our interpretation of the density requirements on the gross parcel. That parcel and the dedicated street came from that parcel, so the applicant feels that that was originally the intent of the ordinance and that those RD parcels should be zoned in that area or could be zoned in that area based on the Commission's wish, so...
Thank you. I understand your understanding. Okay, now I'd like to clear the public hearing closed. In turn of the planning commissioners for discussion and possible motion.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I just had one quick question. I see on March 25th, there was a neighborhood meeting?
That's correct.
And it only lasted 19 minutes?
I was there for like an hour and a half, but I didn't time the meeting, I'm sorry.
Well, my notes had said it went from 6:03 to 6:22. There were nine members of the general public there, one county lausanne and one member of the planning department.
That's correct.
Were you able to thoroughly explain the project or...
I felt I did, yes.
Okay. Just seemed odd. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Buckley?
Mr. Chairman, if there's no other comments, I'm ready for a motion. Ready to make a motion.
Very good.
I think this is pretty clear-cut. I don't think the applicant has demonstrated any need for change. It's a, it would be a significant change. The county's against it. Our staff is recommending denial, and it is a, I think this would be a significant detriment to the neighborhood, so I would move to deny item 16.
Motion's been made. Please cast your vote. The motion for denial carries. Item number 17?
Mr. Chairman, move for denial of item 17.
Motion's been made. Please cast your votes. Post.
And the matter goes forward to the city council with the planning commission's recommendation for denial on May 20th.
Thank you. We can now move on to item number 22 and related items 23, 24, and 25. Item number 22 is zoning 33765. The applicant owner is Bishar Esfali from RE Residential Estates to C1 Limited Commercial on the east side of Martin Luther King Boulevard, approximately 500 feet north of Washington Avenue. Item number 23 is variance 33768 to allow a 20-foot rear yard setback where residential adjacency standards require 35 feet. And item number 24 is variance 33771 to allow 32 parking spaces and zero loading spaces where 36 parking spaces and one loading space are required. And item number 25 is site development review 33767 for a proposed 6,232-square-foot commercial building with waivers of the perimeter landscaping buffer standards to allow buffers of 10 feet wide where 15 is required along the west perimeter and 5 feet where 8 feet is required along the north and south perimeters, and to allow a waiver of the building placement and orientation standards. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, in regard to the request of rezoning, staff finds it compatible with the general plan and the surrounding land uses and is recommending approval. In regards to the two variants, staff finds that those are self-imposed hardship due to an improper design of the site plan and recommends denial of both. In regards to the site plan, staff is unsupported of the waivers. An alternative design of this project could alleviate all the variances and the waivers, and therefore, staff recommends denial of the site plan.
Thank you. Now I'd like to clear the public hearing open and invite anyone in attendance wishing to speak on the matter to approach the microphone on behalf of the project we have.
Tom Rodriguez, Empire Land and Development, 1115 Mariposa, Boulder City, Nevada.
Thank you.
Thank you. You know, with regard to the zoning, we feel that it's applicable, as staff does, considering the land use designation is commercial and that the MLK has a 100-foot right-of-way and improvements are going on MLK now as well, and there's no access to residential areas. And I believe it was designated, this land used to create the buffer between some of the residential areas surrounding, so obviously, we would support the approval of the zone change to C1 Limited Commercial.
Thank you. Anyone else in attendance wishing to speak on this matter, please approach the microphone and give your name and address for the record.
Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th. I just wondered, on the monitors there, it didn't show which is north, and I see on the plan here.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hi, my name is Chandra Summers Armstrong. I live at 1931 Fair Avenue, which is in Bonanza Village, which is directly west of... Yes, thank you. West of his project. I'm concerned that he's not coming with any renderings of what this project is going to look like. At this point, I'm not sure if that's required, but we are concerned as a neighborhood. We've just reinstated our neighborhood association, and we're trying to become more active, and we did receive some information, but there was no request, thank you, for, he never came to our neighborhood association, and we are registered with the city. We do understand that Martin Luther King and that area has gone commercial, and we respect that. We do need more business there, but we need it to look compatible with the community. And I'm also concerned that he doesn't have any loading in his current plan. If you've driven down Martin Luther King any day of the week during business hours, egress and ingress out of this location is difficult on any given day. And to place yourself in a position where you don't have sufficient space to pull a truck or a loading vehicle in so that there's no runover into Martin Luther King, I think is just poor planning. And so if the city staff believes that he can heal this problem with better design, I think that he ought to do that. And I also am looking at his conceptual plans, and to me, this by no means meets the standards that Hair Unlimited and their complex has put there with Bank of America. We don't want just anything there. We would like to have a building that looks compatible with the direction of where Martin Luther King and Washington, between Washington and J Street, I mean Owens Park, pardon me, is going. And we just don't want a slab of concrete. We want it to look well and integrate with the community. So that, those are my only concerns. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, through you, Ms. Armstrong?
Yes, sir, hi.
Was it, is it your statement that a community meeting was not held or that...
We were never contacted, sir. But then again...
I don't think it requires it.
Sure, I understand.
I'm just curious whether or not, if that were to occur, would perhaps you get on the same page, or could some of these issues be mitigated?
I think that we ought to try. I think that there has to be an effort made. Bonanza Village, like I said, is directly on the other side of the street, and we have, I can think of one absolutely brand-new house at the corner of Fair and Martin Luther King, which is not quite, but pretty darn adjacent to this, that they would be affected. We have a wall, but you can still, you know, there's no, we have no idea how tall this is. We just know the general square footage, and my look at these...
So you haven't had an opportunity to look at the site plan or anything?
Nothing, haven't seen anything except the little card that came out.
Okay, thank you.
And we do meet the second Tuesday of every month, and he is more than welcome to come out and talk to us.
I'm just wondering, before we vote on it, whether the propriety of maybe allowing that communication to occur, if perhaps it could be some way to mitigate, or at least you would know, the community that's most affected by this would know what the plan is and either adopt it or object to it, or...
We would be more than willing to talk to him and voice our concerns and see what could be done to help.
I'm just one lone voice, but it seems to me that that would be the...
I would echo the concerns, you know, but before we go, I'd like to have the opportunity for anyone else in attendance wishing to speak on the matter to come forward. Okay, if there's no one else, then we can close the public hearing. I also might echo Commissioner Raven's concerns because the staff did point out some fairly easily correctable elements of your proposal. That in conjunction with the meeting with the Bonanza Association might serve yourself well, well to hold this for just a short period.
Well, if I can address just a few comments before I move forward. One, no offense was intended with not attending. If we'd have known of that meeting, we certainly would have attended. We don't have a problem doing so at this point either. With regard to the SDR and the parking variance, you know, we met with city staff on more than one occasion. The original plan that we came in was a little more intense, but I did want to address some comments so that the young lady can go back to her associates and neighbors and talk about this project with some confidence before we meet with them at the beginning of the month. The building height is 15 feet, and the reason we did that is we wanted to keep it low considering the residential adjacency to the east. We also have, as was stated in the record, a variance for a 20-foot rear setback against that. Looking at the project, if I may, from a horizontal perspective, it's difficult, the requirement of 35 feet in the rear adjacent to this residential would cut the building in half. To achieve the two aisles of parking, which would be required no matter what, even at 20 spaces, I'd still have to have that because I only have 17 here. I'd have to have the double. So the 19-foot, the 24-foot, and the other 19 feet cuts into the landscaping. We went 20 feet in an attempt to recognize where it's been approved in the past, a 20-foot setback adjacent to residential with a maximum 15-foot height. We also went so far as to space our landscaping in that rear with 20-foot on-center trees, 24-inch box trees, as well as shrubs, all applicable and in compliance with the Las Vegas landscaping areas. With regard to aesthetically, I can totally respect that, you know, the residents and the community would want something grand and not just any building. What we've tried to do here is we followed staff's recommendations in our previous meetings... when we're designing this together with staff on the 360-degree architecture. We also used the color standards that were applicable to that area. But at the end of the day, because I don't want to lead anybody on that we can do something that we cannot, it's a .58 acres, and we're strapped for parking. Obviously, you know, development in commercial real estate is a function of a mathematical equation. Square feet, market rents have dropped, so square feet have to, you know, meet a certain debt service on the construction for the loan. So we have to meet a certain amount of square footage. Now, it's flexible, and we've worked, we've come down. I think we originally proposed 6,800 square feet, so we've come down. I've consulted during this meeting, I'll admit via text messaging with the owner, that we may be able to, you know, to be flexible on the SDR and the parking variance. We'll certainly take another look at that. With regard to loading, we don't want to do anything that is going to upset anybody. We want to add to this community. It's a vacant lot without development, but it's a .58 acre vacant lot. So there's really, you know, Bank of America, it's really not something that we could achieve in this location, with all due respect. And then ingress and egress, we did have a smaller driveway, and upon city's recommendation, we widened that to a 32-foot driveway. That being said, we'd like the zoning to go forward. We'd like the setbacks because, like I pointed out in the horizontal, it's really the only setback that we're noncompliant. We have 10 on the sides. Obviously, we have a significant front setback, but the rear, you know, we can shrink widthwise and pick up some more spaces, but that rear is really tough to meet anything less than 20 feet without further cutting into the landscaping area, which right now is at 11 feet. So with that being said, we're happy to meet. We're happy to hold the parking until another meeting. We're happy to hold the SDR until another meeting. We will do what is to the satisfaction of the Planning Commission.
I'm not voting on the zoning unless the other stuff is all together.
Understood, but I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't ask.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Please.
You know, this part of town hungers for development like a lot of places in our community. But in the name of, you know, the economy, the, you know, trying to create economic development, to do a poorly planned project, and I'll say this again, is will just further deteriorate the neighborhood when it's, when it fails to succeed. You can look at compromise after compromise on some of the secondary arterials in this community where we've said, oh, it won't matter if we don't have parking, it won't matter if we don't have loading docks, it won't matter if we don't have rear delivery areas for people to bring product in and out of their spaces, and we wind up with unanchored strip shop. This, it's overbuilt, and it, if it doesn't make economic sense without all these variances, it'll be a failure, and it will be worse for the community. I was rather surprised, we had a group here earlier talking about West Las Vegas Chamber and really wanting to have a voice in the future, and I was surprised I didn't see them here, because part of these community plans and neighborhood plans implementing them is doing the heavy lifting on each individual parcel, working with your neighbors to create a greater development in the community. I, like Commissioner Evans, would not vote on this in separate parts. It just, it'll be a compromise that Ms. Armstrong and her family will have to live with and won't be good for that neighborhood.
Understood. If I could ask, while I'm still up here and I have a few more minutes, maybe, if we could get into the next Planning Commission, we can make these revisions. I believe the next Planning Commission meeting is after the first, which would give us an opportunity to meet with that association and make those changes to the city and come back. And I've known Peter for a long, long time. We'll leave it to Peter and his group to determine if we've made substantial changes that would warrant an approval rather than just a denial. If that's okay, we'd like to make a very next meeting.
I think we could hold it in advance until the 14th of May, and that's not going to delay significantly.
14th of May. We'll commit to that.
We'll get a time to meet with the neighborhood group and...
But take a look at our commercial design standards.
Absolutely.
Building setting farther forward, walkable communities, which is part of the agenda for West Las Vegas, better aesthetics. Let's start someplace, and you have an opportunity to make a big, big beginning here.
We had a plan that actually had the building up against Martin Luther King, and the entrance was severely, you know, restricted, and that was more difficult.
Mr. Goines, do you have a comment or ready for a question?
Yeah, just a couple of comments. I suggest you pick up a copy of the 2020 plan, too, and you can do that by contacting the councilman's office. But welcome to the neighborhood. Folks over here are very concerned, not only from the past, but for what they have envisioned for in the future. Also, look to those neighborhoods that are to the east of you as well, to see if you can include those folks as well, even if you have to go into the neighborhood and knock door to door and let them know that there is a meeting. But Ms. Armstrong, I was looking at the notice area over here, and I see the radius map has a little bit of Fair Avenue, a little bit of Sharon Street, a little bit of Ralston Street, and a little bit of Opier Street, and a little corner of Washington. So you're further in in there, and I don't think you're in that notice area, and that's probably why you didn't get it, but...
I did.
Oh, you did get it?
Yes, at the neighborhood's point of contact, I did get it.
Oh, you did? Oh, okay. I thought you didn't, but... So that takes my comments. But that would, Mr. Rodriguez, that would be my suggestion as to you, is to make sure you notify as many folks in there and just contact the councilman's office, and they'll accommodate you.
Thanks, sir.
You're welcome.
Then I'll make the motion to obey this item till May 14th meeting. Motion's been made, please cast your votes. Post?
...
Motion carries. We now move to item number 26, which is a waiver 33-758. The applicant owner is Caroline's Court LLC to allow no amenity zone along a 233-foot portion of Durango Drive where 2.5-foot amenity zone is required adjacent to the northeast corner of Durango Drive at El Capitan Way. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant has offered no compelling justification as to why the 2-1/2-foot amenity zone cannot be provided, and staff finds the requested waiver as preferential in nature and therefore self-imposed hardship and is recommending denial. Please note additional letters of protest have been received after the publishing. Thank you.
I'd like to clear the public hearing open now. Anyone in attendance wishing to speak, please approach the microphone and give your name and address for the record.
Good evening, folks. William Bagley, Redneck Enterprises, representing Caroline's Court, 5501 Desert Spring Road. Commissioner Ellsworth, how you feel tonight?
I'm real good.
Apparently not, because you've been moving around a whole lot.
I had minor surgery earlier this week, and that's why you see me moving, but...
Okay, I can relate to that. I know I'm not as pretty as Tabitha, but I still want to try to get what my job is here, to represent my client. This is typical of my, let's say, representation of Caroline's Court, is that I have been to few commission meetings through representing from the negative side. In this particular case, I'm representing from the positive side, and I'm going to ask for the commission to approve our request. First off, I would like to start with the project site. I don't know if you've put up the location subject map, but currently what I have here is mapping pictures and photos that represent what we currently have. Our intent for this particular waiver request is to deviate from once-normal Town Center standards and get to where we can actually meet both that of the city requirement as well as that of State and Nevada Department of Transportation. From what we would like to do is get from what would be qualified as on Durango Drive, US 95, on the easterly portion, north of, northerly side of Durango, from this, which is our current site, to better than this, what we see at US 95 and Ann Road. This particular portion here of US 95 and Ann Road is the exit ramp going southbound to go westbound on to Ann Road approaching Centennial Center Boulevard, as to my understanding where Town Center standards actually commence. What we really, truly don't want to get to is... Do what we consider this not to be an alternative. This is the easterly side of US 95 and Ann Road, and it happens to sit there at Tenaya Way, leading towards the north. This particular development was allowed to go forth, and they placed no landscaping whatsoever, no amenity zone, and it sits in this particular condition. We don't want to do that. We want to go back to better than this condition here, which is at Ann and 95. Few more photos. Our condition of existing site, this is looking west, beginning of construction. This is looking west on Durango, going towards the US 95 on the northerly side. Speed limit is posted as 45. Here's a sign showing US 95 to go south, which leads you this direction here, and then to go north this direction here. At this particular point here, there's the US 95 control of access fencing. That is a pedestrian that has apparently climbed over the wall, the barrier wall, and is progressing down into the area where they should really, truly not be. The barrier rail that is in question sits at this location here and continues as it progresses up towards the ramp, the northbound ramp of US 95. This is, looks to appear to be a stormy day. It was about a month ago when we actually had the snow on the mountains. Looks pretty right there. This is part of the barrier rail that is going to be the subject site that we have in question. This is still more of the photos, still looking and continuing in a westerly direction. Most importantly, what I want to point out is how the barrier rail sits at the back of sidewalk. Currently, there's the back of curb, curb and gutter, and this is the area that we're looking to make a change. That's already constructed. It was all constructed as part of the US 95-Durango interchange. It had both federal money, state money, and city monies were involved with the actual installation and construction of those particular features. The slope, as you see here, is a one-to-one photo as it progresses down the hill towards the chain link fence. This is 200% exaggerated view for the slope. This is 100% with a exaggeration of a picture taken at an angle. Current construction, looking east. This is a slope coming down the backside of the barrier rail towards the chain link fence. This is our property that we're developing. Again, here's the property as it shows, the grading is already started. The barrier rail, as it's coming up and approaching towards US 95, the Walgreens sits over here, the Fresh &amp; Easy sits over there.
Simply while you've got that one picture there on display, show us where the 2-1/2-foot amenity zone is supposed to be.
The 2-1/2-foot amenity zone that is anticipated per Town Center standards would be at the back of curb here, approaching in this area of the sidewalk. I have a better picture to show you in just a minute.
Okay, thank you.
Which is coming from this location. As you can see here, here's the drainage, existing drainage that feature that sits there, and this is, this is westbound Durango. This is the barrier rail as it sits, as it starts tapering up, as it's coming up towards where we're actually going to ask for the cut to be made. This location at this here is where this orange mark is, is where we're anticipating cutting the existing barrier rail in order to place our approved drive approach and then take that where we have a slope that allows us to get our ingress egress off of the actual Durango Drive roadway.
Okay, so let me, you're losing the audience, so then...
Yeah.
I'm trying to...
Great pictures.
Get us back to there. If we, if we look at what you had approved with all the landscaping, and we all knew the barrier rail was there, okay, I don't think Town Center standards are asking to have the barrier rail moved back 2-1/2 feet and created an amenity zone in front of it.
That is, that is what is being asked of us.
To rebuild the barrier rail?
Is to remove the barrier rail in its entirety from that location, move it northerly 2-1/2 feet in order to allow placement of the barrier rail back for slope protection and safety enhancement for the motorists.
Right.
And put in the 2-1/2-foot amenity zone at the back of curb. That is what we're trying to prevent, of us having to be forced in which to do that. We're not asking for waiver in which to not take in place the landscaping. This is our intent. Our intent, this being Durango Drive, is this segment here, which would be westerly of our proposed drive approach as it's approaching US 95, we would have our sidewalk and the barrier rail as it currently sits. We would be placing all our landscaping behind that, better than what we saw in the original pictures of US 95 and Ann. Our landscaping is actually more dense than what is actually proposed per Town Center standards. The other side of the driveway, as we're going easterly, we would be putting in the landscaping and the amenity zone per Town Center standards. The only location we are asking for to waiver is on the westerly portion of our proposed drive approach.
Got you. Okay.
And that's because you're asking for the driveway, the approved driveway? That is correct. If we were not asking for a driveway in that location, we would be not asking for the waiver. We would also then be forced still to place the 2-1/2-foot amenity zone.
Okay.
So what we're really, truly wanting to do is meet Town Center standards at the location, what would be qualified as east of our driveway approach, and maintain Town Center standards throughout the rest of the property. We do have a letter from the District Engineer of Department of Transportation in our packet. You have seen that, I hope, and it's stating is that they're asking for us to leave the existing barrier rail in place as is, along with the sidewalk west of our drive approach. Are there any questions we can ask? Be answered?
Okay, let me ask if there's anyone else in attendance who wishes to speak on the matter?
Yes, I have the representative from Caroline's Court here, the owner of the property.
So it's just a continuation of...
Jacob Kakshore, Caroline's Court representative. Needless to say that the Centennial Town Center requirement is 15 feet of landscaping between the walkway to the buildings. We have over 50 feet, close to 60 feet at some points, over 60 feet, between the walkway and the buildings. Then closest it gets is about 45 feet. So as far as landscaping is concerned, I don't know if you can see it properly on the screen. It is heavily landscaped, way more than the Town Center requirement as far as trees, as far as shrubs. End dot is totally against it because of the safety, and quite frankly, we don't see the need of relocating city lights, conduits, removal of the existing five-foot walkway, shifting it 2-1/2 feet just to create a landscaping 2-1/2 feet on a, on a location that really is rarely used by any pedestrian. After all, this is the on-ramp to the freeway.
I think we understand your position. Anyone else in attendance wish to speak on this matter? Saying now to declare the public hearing closed and turn it over to the Planning Commissioners for discussion and possible motion. My thoughts on moving the barriers so that you can install a 2-1/2-foot wide landscape median or amenity zone, as we call it, is going to be extremely difficult to keep any plant material alive in that size of an area, plus the heat and the reflection off of that wall will just make it impossible, and the safety hazards associated with the maintenance of it, even if you were to so try, make it a very difficult goal to accomplish. So anyone else have any thoughts on the matter?
I'd like to understand, staff, because I still am having a hard time. I understood this when the site plan got approved. I'm a little more confused that we've cut this driveway in and now we have all these apparent problems.
Originally, the original site plan showed the 2-1/2-foot amenity zone, the sidewalk, and then in the landscape barrier along this section. When the applicant got to the civil plan review, the engineer of record... When, when the applicant got to the civil plan review, the, the engineer of record indicated that there was a Jersey rail there, and that it would be not possible to do that, and their desire was to seek the waiver instead of moving the Jersey rail. So what you saw originally on this item was the Town Center standards. What you're seeing today is a request to do something slightly different.
But hasn't the Jersey rail been there forever?
The Jersey rail was there forever, correct, but the applicant indicated on the original site plan that they would be doing something differently.
So, I, I'm not saying it's not right, but I, I gotta believe, I want to say that it was like we were, we were presented a bill of goods, you know, a pretty picture that you were in, it was impossible for you to get there, and now that you, it's been enough time, now you're back, you're showing, well, it really was impossible to get there, let us have the waiver since we're already underway on this thing. And that, to me, creates a problem. I think, I always thought this plan worked. I always had concerns with this drive because it's an acceleration drive. It's an uphill grade. It's an uphill grade coming in and out of that, that center, and it's, it creates some general safety areas. So having the amenity zone, having the setbacks and stuff, was at least a softening of that. Now, you know, I, I didn't think Endot was going to let anybody move the Jersey rail, but...
If I, if I may interject, sir. One of the reasons is unfortunately, the civil engineering firm worked out of Orange County, unfortunately, even though they had a local...
Always the case here.
Even though they have a local office, unfortunately, the engineer has taken off and gone to Guam. They never looked at the site conditions, and unfortunately, I have been delayed by over a year and fallen into this recession over my civil engineers having been changed a number of times. One of the reasons. The other reason is Endot is, when we approached Endot, Endot, it's not like we went there to get their support. Endot is just dead against it. They don't want it. They cited a number of issues. They told us that lights there at that height with that lighting are there for a particular There were a number of other issues. I don't know, Bill, if you can remember, but the director told us...
Well, Mary Martini, the district engineer, when we first approached her with showing her what we were being forced in which to facilitate, we were actually taking a drive approach into the property off of Durango. We were incorporating a bus turnout. We had to deal with drainage issues, and then we asked her, is it possible for you to allow us to cut the barrier rail and do something for the slope? You might have been shocked by her facial expression, like almost, what are you talking about? We only have to come and ask the question, so that's what we did. There were many other reasons as far as the stability of the slope, the structural integrity of how the interchange was constructed. There were many items that she did not want to say yes to. She just wanted to say, no, we're not asking for you to come forward and say, please approve this. We will not approve it. That's what we got from Mary Martini.
Thank you. I would be remiss if we did, we just, this could have been avoided if you'd have made a site visit before submitting drawings, and I would be remiss if I didn't put in a plug for local contractors. You know, Southern Nevada is full of very qualified civil engineering firms and architectural firms, and had you hired local, but of course hindsight's perfect.
Well, I am, I am local, and I'm a consultant here, and anytime I ask and work with my client, I do give them recommendations, and in this particular event, I was not asked. Engineer had already been selected. I only work with the engineers that the client chooses.
Yep.
I do my best to make it happen.
Again, that was not my decision.
I know.
My tenant, Lowe's, has...
They have the time.
They forced me into working with their engineer.
I'm only doing what my mother would call kidding on the square.
We, we respect your, your statement, sir.
It's my mom's.
My architect on the rest of it is local.
Okay. Any further discussion? Anyone here to initiate a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I, I, and I don't, I guess I'm without Commissioner Crustsdale's or the other commissioners' background on this, and if I understand what really they're asking for is what, as I understand, is, is to move what's already been constructed on, basically on the upper half of Durango there, back two and a half feet so that this two-and-a-half-foot amenity zone could be put in. And I think that's great that, that those amenity zones are there to protect the pedestrians between, you know, the fast-moving traffic and the sidewalk, but it seems to me, at this point in time, the way the thing has been built, that there's a justification for giving them the waiver on this. So I would make a motion for approval of the waiver.
Motion has been made. Please cast your votes. Post?
While we're waiting, we appreciate your time and thank you for your, your input and your statements.
You're just teasing me, right?
We were actually hoping to be able to do this administratively and not have to appear. Unfortunately, we were not able to do such.
If the motion carries?
And that is final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
Thank you.
Thank you. We now move to item number 27, which is variance 33762. The applicant owner is Oga Sergi Vizkaya, to allow a proposed 12-foot-high wall in the front yard setback area where five feet is the minimum allowed, and the side yard where eight feet is the maximum allowed at 1640 South Tenea Way. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant has recently submitted revised plans to staff, and we have reviewed them. It results in the, the proposed development is an eight-foot-tall stucced CMU wall without the additional four-foot sport fencing along the top of that, that wall. So that area is no longer depicted as being used for a tennis court on the revised plans, which the applicant has on dais. The request variance is purely preferential in nature, as the applicant has presented no extraordinary exceptional situation or condition that would warrant the approval of this request. Therefore, staff has recommended denial. Please note, additional letters of protest and support have been received after the publishing. Thank you.
If I may, what are the differences in what is before us now with what is noticed?
Quite simply, the four-foot sport fencing has been removed from the wall height, so it equals an eight-foot CMU wall on along the front and side property lines in the front yard area.
Pete, it is a proposed what feet high wall in the front yard?
Eight feet.
Where five is allowed?
Correct.
And in the side, it is still eight?
Eight feet is allowable on the side. It's only in the front yard area.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now I'd like to declare the public hearing open and invite anyone in attendance who wish to speak on this matter to approach the microphone and give your name for the record. Mr. Skavaya?
Cassidy Shakavichus, on behalf of the owner, Design Cell Architects, 10777 West Twain Avenue. I'd like to present the project. This is a remodel in addition to existing residence that the owner just recently purchased. This is a remodel in addition to existing residence that the owner recently purchased. I would like to, maybe, the existing residence is located in this area, and, and the main entrance and driveway to the, to the existing house is exactly as in the future remodel off of the Doe Avenue. We would like to disagree with staff in this point, or essentially point out that we think that there is a particular hardship that's, that's in this, in the site for the use of the front yard area, is because technically, the front yard area is where the entrance is to our site. That's where we could place our driveways, we could place garage, and, and technically that area can be used with the, with the lower, with the low fencing. De facto, the technic, well, de facto, the front yard area is a side area to our, to our house, and with leaving that area at, you know, two-foot tall solid fence with a, with a three-foot wrought iron fence, it exposes the house to, you know, privacy issues, security issues, and, and this, this is, this area becomes really, you know, too open for, from an exterior. And as I said, we can't, we cannot use it for anything else. We cannot use it for the driveway, for example, as the front yard should be used. Originally, the, the reason for this request was to, to really to find a particular, any use for the side yard area, because it's fairly large and we couldn't use for anything else, so the owner had a proposal to use it for, for the tennis court. However, recent, we just decided to remove that request and, and use that area for a, for a garden. There's still, we would still like, like to keep the eight-foot fence on the, on the Tenea Way, front, front, technical front yard, just because it's really is a side yard to our property, and the owner would be exposed to, to too much privacy, well, he would, you know, the privacy would be reduced too much for the house and, and the security as well. That's why we would like to request to keep that eight-foot fence, which is also not, is not unprecedented in the, in the neighborhood, and I would like to point come several pictures. This, this is a shot taken from the property looking across Tenea Way. Right across the street, there is a four-foot retaining wall, actually above the berm, and then a six-foot block fence, which is resulting in 10, 10-plus solid block fence across, across, across Twain, across Tenea Way, and just across the Doe Avenue, it's another eight-foot solid wall to another, to another neighbor. So all along this area, there is plenty of different solid walls that we can see, and this, this is not an unusual request, and I think it's, would alleviate the hardship of, of having large area...
Excuse me, sir. Can, Mr. Chairman, I'm confused. Are you seeking a 12-foot-high wall, an eight-foot-high wall?
Okay.
I'm, I'm lost.
Okay.
You gotta work with me in simple terms. I'm not that smart.
As, as staff has reiterated, we are seeking eight-foot block wall.
Eight foot?
Yes.
On all sides?
On all sides.
Tenea and the other.
That's right.
And then the illustrations that you showed us are, you didn't tell me what those heights are.
These heights, illustrations are eight-foot wall.
No, no, on the other, you showed us a lot of other pictures, but I have no idea what those heights are.
On the pictures?
And tell me why you need eight feet. I guess that's what I'm looking for. Why do you need eight feet when the code doesn't allow that? Just, that's where I want to go.
We, the code doesn't allow for the front yard eight feet. It, it's allowing for the side yard eight feet, right?
And so what's the hardship?
The hardship is that this is, de facto, is not a front yard for our property. We cannot use it as an open fence area. We cannot put a driveway there. We cannot put a parking there. Our front door is really on different area, and is, de facto, a side yard for the property. And it cannot, if it's left open, the house is not private anymore, and, and it's...
Okay, so, and I know this is a little unusual, but does the house next door have the similar, does it have any fencing in the house next to that? Would you be the only house on that block with an eight-foot fence?
There is a, there is a, a lot of houses on that, on, in that, in that area with eight-foot fences on the wall. In, in many cases, it's a sidewall, many, it's, it's, the, the, the way that the city determines, well, that's, determining what is the front yard is really the, the narrowest portion of the, of the, you know, this half an acre lot, and it's not by where the entrance is located. So we are told that this is the front yard, even though, even though the existing house and, and the property is, has the entrance from the, from the, from the side, from the side street. We can't, we couldn't change this, in this design. It was not feasible to, to change all that, and we would like to keep the entrance as it is in this house, or would like to utilize this, you know, de facto, side yard area for something usable for the house.
Thank, thank you. Before we get into discussions and with the planning commissioners, I would like to ask anyone else in attendance who would like to speak on this matter to approach the microphone and give your name and address for the record. Seeing none, I declare the public hearing closed, and now I'll turn the matter over to the planning commissioners for discussion and possible motion. I would like to ask you first whether we have a, an eight-foot wall proposed or requested along Tenea. However, on top of that eight-foot wall, we need another four feet of sport fencing, don't we, so to keep the tennis ball? I'm a tennis player, and I, I'm the worst tennis player in the house, and I need at least 12, if not 16, foot to keep the balls from going out in the street.
We just, we just have requested that tennis court is not going to be considered in this area. We're requesting not to remove, we're actually removing the request for the four-foot fencing above the eight-foot wall, and want to keep only eight-foot wall, solid block wall on the property.
Okay, thank you. Any other?
Through you, Mr. Chairman?
Please.
I guess what, why'd you buy it? Why, why'd they buy the house if they want to do all this to it? I mean, I don't, it seems like you're trying to reconfigure the whole house.
The, the house that has been bought, it's, it's existing home, it's foreclosure house that's on, on the, on the property. It has been vacated by existing residents, and, and the owner bought the house and would like to make an improvement to it for, for him to inhabit it. And existing residence is actually in this portion right now. It has the entrance and driveway in, in approximately, pretty much in exactly the same location as is. What's added to the house is this wing and added additional casita-like garage in this area, and...
Where'd this architecture come from? Is this a European design or something?
I, I would say it's a modern architecture that our company is known for.
Very unique. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I might?
Oh.
Oh, thank you, sorry. I have a question. On that property line, along Tenea, everybody else has five-foot walls, right?
The next property next to us is a vacant property.
Right, but then the next four are all developed. Are those all five-foot walls?
Next four in the Tenea, they, I, I could tell they, they are five-foot walls. However, they do have, they do have the, the front yard. They have the driveways in there.
No, I understand. I mean, it's, it's actually their front yard. You chose to reorient yours, so that's really your side yard now rather than your front yard, but everybody else along Tenea still has the five-foot walls.
Right, we didn't choose to reorient. We, we have purchased the, the house that's existing, has the entrance on...
Sure. No, I understand. I say, I say you...
And we couldn't change really because it, it wouldn't flow at all, you know, we have to demolish the property totally.
Right, no, and I didn't, when I say you, I just mean whoever owned the property, whether it was you or the prior developers, they, they chose to reorient that. But I just wanted to make sure I understand. Everybody else along there is the five-foot wall?
On this particular street?
Right.
Yes, but across the street, we have 12-foot wall, actually continues really, really, you know, for, for like several hundred of feet. Across this way, on, on Doe, there's an eight-foot wall.
On, on the other side of Tenea?
Yes, both on Tenea, both on Tenea and both on Doe. And there's, the corner conditions like that, there are, you know, I just drove, actually didn't take the pictures, but there, there are quite a few conditions like this, you know, all along Tenea, just way that the both, both, you know, the shorter...
And have you met with homeowners around there to get their feedback on what they think of your home, or your proposed high wall?
Well, I understood there was a, the, no, we have not met, but I understood that there were like three cards at least they received in the protest.
Why, why don't you meet with them? I mean, I would like to hear what the homeowners have to say about it. I mean, I see your point. You got great logic. It's a corner lot. The house is oriented differently. I understand all that, but, but I'd like to see what the homeowners have to say about that they live nearby. I mean, if, if I'm on Tenea and I've got a five-foot wall, it's going to frustrate me that you build this eight-foot wall down on the corner. I mean, that's going to be frustrating to me. But if all your homeowners around you say, no, it looks fine the way they did it, it fits in, I'm going to be a little more sympathetic. I mean, if, if I'm on Tenea and I've got a five-foot wall, it's going to frustrate me that you build this eight-foot wall down on the corner, I mean, that's going to be frustrating to me. But if all your homeowners around you say, no, it looks fine the way they did it, it fits in, I'm going to be a little more sympathetic.
Yes, frankly, we, we had really proposed 12, you know, just prior to, to yesterday, until we made this decision to remove sports fencing and we find a different use for that area. Yes, 12-foot, and the way the staff report sounded, they're requesting 12-foot wall, that's, that sounds really, really harsh. And that's why I would see that there would be a protest for that, you know, without proper explanation that this is, you know, transparent sports fencing above.
And I have one last question. Is the owner going to occupy the home or are you, or is this being rented out?
The, the owner intends to occupy the home.
Okay. Well, my recommendation to you, I mean, I, I don't want to hijack, but I would recommend you have a homeowners meeting and say what the other homeowners around that neighborhood are saying to you before you present this to us. But that's my suggestion to you.
And I also have one more, um, suggestion for you because I drove by this property at two different times during the day. And for the record, it is a very busy corner. Be it at, it was 8:30 in the morning and I was by there at 1:30 this afternoon. So, it, that corner generates a lot more traffic than, than people would believe just by looking at that picture. And what I would like to see is, um, I, or for you to think about is getting your eight feet, but maybe doing like six feet and then maybe two feet of wrought iron so it's more aesthetically pleasing to the eye, which would give you the full eight feet and it would look really nice. And then most importantly, I want to know what's going to be in front of that wall, like, um, like a nice landscape or shrub or something. So, for me, changing it at the last minute, I don't feel that I personally have enough information. I agree with my fellow commissioner, Mr. Ellsworth, that you should have some neighborhood input. And I love walls, I live behind one of the biggest walls in town and I agree wholeheartedly that you need a wall in that corner. And, but I just think that you're not giving us enough information and you changed it at the very last second. So, it's my opinion that you come back in a couple of weeks with more information for all of us and something more aesthetically pleasing than what you're showing us here. And then you will see my support.
Mr. Chairman, I have one other comment if I can to sort of add on to that. I don't know how I would vote in the, when you come forward again, if in fact that's the case. If the other walls are five feet, you know, I want to hear why you need eight. But what I have seen work in some of these older neighborhoods and more mature neighborhoods near where I live, is where you will provide a, a barrier of sorts, a landscape barrier, and then the wall. Because that way, it doesn't stick out as you come down the street like a canyon and then suddenly there's a compound. The, the argument, I think, from a planning perspective, is that it takes neighborhoods and it, and it singles out a particular home that is totally out of character with all the others. And it's not so much that I'm opposed to that, it's that I would like to see it blend in with the rest of the neighborhood. And if your height is more than what the code allows, because from what I understand, you can have up to five feet, but you want eight, you originally wanted 12 and I guess you didn't think you would get it, so. But my thought is, if, if this area is indeed not a tennis court in a garden area, that perhaps you could reduce this, or increase the setback to the wall that you're proposing. And I would have a, a greater degree of comfort because I think the neighbors would be less impacted by that.
The, the zoning requirement, this requires a setback of 50 feet before we can build any, you know, any wall above, above two-foot solid and, you know, essentially five-foot tall. Just, just one remark. The other remark is that, that the area has all kinds of, either have, has five-foot walls or eight-foot walls on constant basis. It's not totally a difference from, from the rest of properties. It's only the, the matter that some properties are rotated sideways to the street, some properties are located the, the shorter way to the street. That's what makes a difference. And, uh, along this Tenea Way, just several properties further, the, these properties are located just happens to be the shorter way. Some properties are located sideways, then those properties have eight-foot walls. So, the eight-foot walls are not unprecedented, it's all around in that area, it's just.
From, from what I saw, and I, and I don't want to argue with you, what you showed us were a lot of other walls that looked like gated communities, some across the street. There was one continuous wall surrounding a community. What I'm trying to avoid is where you have one home on the street that sticks out with a wall that's way above what the code would allow and it would look silly. That's, that's all I'm saying. So, you, you want 12 feet, you're willing to reduce it to eight. My colleague is suggesting that you provide some decorative railing and it may see her support. So, but I, I think that you need to give us a good reason why we would change the, the code.
We, we would be willing essentially to.
And, and don't do it at the day before the meeting or the day of the meeting.
Sorry.
Because I want the staff to be able to assess it.
Right.
I think we made our point. Commissioner Quinn, are you ready to make a motion?
Yeah, if, if it suits you, sir, I'd like to hold this for, till the March 14th, is that okay? May, May 14th, Margot, is that okay with you? Um, and that's number 27, the variance 33762, to hold it until then, till we have more information.
Motion has been made, please cast your votes. Post? That motion is carried.
And there were nine, let's see, there were nine protests that were received prior to the meeting and then the original four. So, there's a total of 13 protests. My staff can give you a copy of those and the commission, of course, has asked that you speak to your neighbors.
Thank you very much. Now I'd like to call a short recess, be just about five, 10 minutes. Thank you very much. See? I'm not thinking in trouble with that city, are you kidding? I worked for strong women on my life.
I'm not sure. And as we develop, we'll have the front, with this house setback, back to the coast.
That's right.
I did this slightly original building?
Yeah.
No.
Mine was in a room, I did it.
Uh, just, I got a minute between, uh, suite 125, 130, I got, I got connected, door between the two buildings and it's approved and accessible.
I don't, I don't know what, what extent does he want to do?
But that's definitely, that's a setback. Feet was set back, it was provided something like eight feet.
Feel the wall with the.
So, you, you're taking two suites, making one, and one having a.
Well, it's clear, it's clear, the cask lot would be all about the same suite, 125, 125.
We are expecting, we have.
And so the permit on our wall?
Oh.
Okay, you know that, yes, I just label a little.
But yeah, the, the extent of the permit was this door, right?
Yeah. The morning, I, I got to have a basic, maybe, uh, to try to accommodate, basically, somebody did it the other day. So, the morning, I get a file, I filled the file, I should see my P and A, so.
Are you having a, a garden meeting?
No.
Okay. I probably won't be in pretty.
Sorry. Everybody's working, so that won't.
48, 19.
But she based on.
To allow a zero-foot side yard setback where three feet is required for an existing accessory structure, Class 1, at 1317 South Sixth Street. And the special use permit is item number 29. The number is 33981 for an existing accessory structure. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, this Class 1 accessory structure was constructed some decades ago, but without permits. As such, staff cannot recommend approval and is recommending a denial of the variance and the associated special use permit.
Thank you. Now declare the public hearing open. Anyone in attendance wishing to speak on the matter, please approach the microphone and give your name and address for the record.
My name's Michael Goodwin, owner of the property with my wife Camila. And address is 1317 Sixth Street. I would like to start off just by saying that what he stated at the beginning here, that, excuse me, Chairman and Council, thank you for hearing me today. What he stated at the beginning may not be true. What they don't have is any records on this property being built. So we don't know if the casita and the home was built simultaneously. All of our research would be able to say that aerials from all the way back into the 60s show that this property was as-is, even prior to a application for a permit being submitted in 1964, when they did a little bit of work to the home and they did go in for an application for a building permit on that. And in 1970, they also did a conversion from the carport to a garage. I mean, a carport to an internal-
Suffice to say, it didn't happen during your period of ownership.
Oh, no, no, sir, it did not. And we just purchased the property at the beginning of the year.
Very good.
And if you look at some of the facts of the property and some of the research that we've done, it would certainly show that this property was built simultaneously with this casita as part of the, as part of the original structure. And I can put to note on the picture here, you can see the electrical service that comes into the house. This picture right here, it actually shows that the electrical service is attached to, and the meter is attached to the casita, not to the home. And everything is distributed out of that electrical meter into the home. And if you look at this picture here, it shows you a picture from inside of the living room out at the casita. And the roof structure has always been simultaneous and been consistent in all the aerial photos you can find, all the way back to the beginning of the 1960s, where this roof was always built like that and the house looked just like this. The interior construction is consistent with each other, being built in the same era at the same time realistically. So I'd like you to take notes of those particular things. We bought this property and didn't realize that this setback was an issue because of those electrical situations that we took note of during our due diligence. And when we went back into the city records and only drawings we could find on the house in any of the future permits after the building of the home, they were literally drawn as a square box. And I do have some pictures of that. Let's see if I can find them real quick for you. I'm sorry for the delay. Let's see if I can find those fast enough here.
Well, it does look like the system was designed by Thomas Edison, so go ahead.
Yes, yes, I mean, and I've got photos of the interior of the casita. It has a bath and a shower and a toilet and sinks in there. And they certainly are from the 50s. They weren't built recently. And the electrical system was also built in the 50s, inside of the casita. We did go around and meet all of our neighbors after we purchased the home and talked to them about these variances once we, once we got called by the city. And it called to our attention that there were lacking of permits in the record. And we did some research on homeownership of the home as well through the period of time that it's existed. And everybody has stated the same thing, that this was as-is. And the homes around us are supportive of us keeping this structure in place. Our next-door neighbor to the, to the south, they have a wall of the back of this property in their backyard. They've actually decorated the wall to enhance their backyard. The catty-corner-back neighbor, he's been there for 20 years, and he has a gardener that we've actually been in communication with. And he actually takes care of the house. The guy's a movie producer and he's not on property very often in multiple times. And so we've talked to him and gotten where they feel like it's a safety issue to keep the house for them. They like the house because it helps keep the barrier to their backyard from, you know, being infiltrated by anybody jumping a wall over into their house. The people directly behind us are two professors at the university. And they've signed our petition as well. And basically, our petition just says, "I am a neighbor of 1317 Sixth Street and support the variance and special use permit to allow the auxiliary structure to remain as it is. The structure has been an important piece of the history of this property and has been in place for as long as I have knowledge of the property." And I do have, from across the street neighbors and all the surrounding neighbors-
Just give it to the city clerk for the permit file.
Okay.
Thank you.
We don't plan on using this auxiliary structure for a home in itself. What, this house does not have a laundry room internally. And when we first applied to keep the structure intact, they asked us to do a variance. And they called me back after they looked at the paperwork for the variance and they discussed it internally. And they said, "Well, we want you to remove the electrical from internally of this house if you want to, if you want to just do the variance. If you want to keep the electrical in this, in this piece, then you need to apply for a special use permit." And so we immediately applied within a three-day period, so we could actually meet this deadline for this hearing today, we applied for the special use as well. And the reason we would want to keep the electrical in there is because we would like to be able to make it a laundry room and be able to use our washer and our dryer. And it has a 220 outlet in that building as-is today. And we would like to be able to utilize it for that particular purpose. And it also doesn't have a garage on the home anymore either. And so right now, the home that we live in has a weight room in the garage. And I would like to be able to utilize this as kind of our laundry room, exercise room. And so both of those kind of need electricity to keep it. And it does have a floor heater in this house. And it does have, it has an air conditioner, as you can see on the side unit there that's mounted through the wall. So, you know, if you have any questions, please let me know. But I would really appreciate your consideration on allowing this important piece of the property to remain intact.
Thank you. Anyone else in attendance wishing to speak on this matter? Please approach the microphone and state your name for the record.
Thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. I sympathize with this man. My house was built in 1947. But for staff, I understood that anything that was built previous to 1962 was grandfathered in. That's the main thing.
Absolutely not.
Huh?
No. Absolutely not. That's an urban legend.
No, sir. I think that's what they're telling us.
Building codes have been required since the early part of the 1900s, when incorporation building permits are required.
Well, my, my neighborhood then has some serious problems.
Thank you very much for sending people down tomorrow.
The other thing is, can this be inspected or has this been inspected by an electrician or a building inspector?
Thank you. Anyone else in attendance wishing to speak on the matter? Seeing none, we'll declare the public hearing closed and offer you the opportunity to answer the question. Has it been inspected? Is it up to current code?
Yeah, as a matter of fact, one of the requirements during the process of filling in our application for the special use permit, I met with one of the city building inspectors. And the first gentleman I met with, in Dave Conore's office, I met with Rod Clark. And Rod Clark had me fill out a permit to have the, have the building basically inspected. And the gentleman, Tom Gugino, came down and did inspect the property. He felt like it was in compliance, but, you know, we would certainly be willing to go through further building inspections of the city to make sure that that is something that, you know, we are in compliance with. We certainly, you know, want to make sure it's a safe, safe property.
Excuse me, sir. Do you have some sort of a checklist or some statement that in fact this has been inspected from building safety and they've signed off on it?
Um, well-
Because I'm not, we don't have any of that, and that's the big issue.
I'll tell you what. I asked Tom for that when he came to the building. And he said that he was going to contact back with Rod Clark and go over what his findings were, and then I would hear back from him. I did not hear back from him.
Did they come in with X-ray, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman?
Please, go ahead.
Did they come in with X-ray equipment to determine if there's rebar in the walls and examine the electrical to make certain that it's all compliant with the electrical standards and that sort of thing, and the plumbing, the foundation? It's a pretty, pretty intensive process, as I understand it.
Commissioner, he did not come in with any X-ray equipment. But I would certainly be willing to employ whatever was necessary to prove that the property is, in fact, a safe place to inhabit in the sense of what we're trying to utilize the property for. We want it to be compliant. We want it to be safe for our family. We have two small children. And we certainly aren't wanting to move into someplace that's unsafe. In fact, it has delayed us moving into the property and has become financial hardship, which is, I guess, not a concern. But because of the delays at this point, and we can't finish the project unless we know that we're going to be able to keep the, that piece of the property intact. And, and it will, it will be detrimental to the livability of the project if we can't, you know, come to some resolve with y'all.
Mr. Chairman, when you conclude, I have some further questions, so.
I think those issues are addressed under Condition 3 under the special use permit.
Yeah, and the five conditions that have been brought forth under the construction, the, the special use.
The way I read it, if you don't mind-
Sure.
The way I read it is if we approve this, it must meet certain safety standards. There's no way around that.
Yes, sir.
And I guess that's the issue. But the questions that I have are, and perhaps you can't answer this, but on the assessor's maps, it would show, regardless of when, what was built, it would show the square footage. And in speaking with people in the neighborhood, and by the way, I love the house, I like the neighborhood, and I love the particular street, but it is constructed all the way to the property line, if I'm not mistaken. It basically mimics a wall. I really have a hard time believing that it was built original to the house. It may have been built a long time ago, but I would almost guarantee you, it is not original to the house. Many of the neighbors have told me that, who've lived there for a great deal of time. Part of the issue is, and the speculation is, it was built a number of years ago where I believe a group home was operating illegally out of the house. So-
What years were that by chance?
I don't know.
Because I mean, I've heard the rumors of the group home.
The questions that I have of you are this. I'm assuming you must have used a Realtor or a title loan company.
No.
Would they not have those records? And isn't that why you do that?
We didn't. We bought it on the courthouse steps on a trust deed sale.
So there's a caveat there. I mean, the, I don't know how that works, so.
Yeah, I'm certainly not asking for any, any allowances other than a variance. And that's what we're applying for, is to be able to maintain the, it's a pristine property and it is a beautiful piece of work. And I would almost say that if I could take you there and show you and walk the property, you might change your mind about the timeframe in which this was constructed. In fact, you know-
I'm just going by what your neighbors who've lived there a long time have told me.
I don't think any of them that I've met have-
And by the way, it doesn't matter. I guess my point is this. It was built a long time ago. We grant you that. I grant you that. Long before you came. But you bought the property and apparently there was some due diligence that didn't occur. If it were approved, there's a process you have to go through, and I think it's more than a cursory inspection. And, and I would probably consider the motion to support that because that is the condition of approval and we, I don't think can waive that. And the issue is, for me and for the people who live in that neighborhood, should for some reason you choose to rent that out, or if you have, as you say, two young children, it's a public safety issue. If the electrical is substandard, if, if for whatever reason the walls are compromised and the place burns down, is it fire-rated? Is it sufficiently fire-rated that it's on the line, on the property line? What would happen if there was a loss of life? We wouldn't have done our job, so.
Well, they have addressed fire issues at that, at that location. Not one of the first things.
But we don't have any of that. We don't, I don't have anything saying, but the conditions of approval would require that, that it come up to the standards for safety. I guess that's the bottom line. But I, the only thing I would say is that you made a mistake when you bought it, assuming that it was permitted when it's clear that it never was.
Well, it's not clear that it wasn't. It's just clear that there's no record of any permit on this home to be built, not the house either. And that's the point that I'd like to make, is that we're not, we're not saying that it was, was permitted. I'm saying that we can't say it wasn't permitted.
It, it wouldn't have been permitted because it's built all the way to the property line and it's got a cockamamie configuration. It's all the way to your neighbor's property line.
But there's, I have, I have pictures of at least several properties in my neighborhood on the same block that have also been built on property line from that era. And so I don't believe that it was as necessarily a unique to this particular home. And, and I would, you know, I can-
I guess, and I don't want to-
I don't like to get in an argument. I don't-
No, I'm willing to support you, but you, I'm not buying that it was built original to the house.
Okay, thank you.
But if you want to go forward and you want my vote, it needs to meet the public safety standards. That's all I'm saying.
And that's one of my requirements.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, please.
We could ban, we could baner this all night, but I, but I think Condition 3 clearly states that all required building, plumbing, and electrical permits shall be obtained and received final inspection within 90 days of approval of the special use. Through Director Wheeler, within that 90 days of inspection, am I correct that our building, electrical, and city folks will come out and do a thorough inspection of this property? And if they find it to be okay or in compliance, they will sign off on it? Is that correct?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner, the way this happens is the applicant has to come in and apply for all of his permits. And then there will be plan check and inspections, and then go through the regular process as it would, similar to as it would if it was new construction. So all of the necessary permits must be, there must be an application and the fees, and then for all the inspections also, through to the final, for everything, the building and the plumbing and the electrical and all of it.
And I believe the applicant says he is in compliance with that. Mr. Goodwin, is that correct?
No, not as of this point.
He's in agreement.
Well, he's in agreement, I mean, in agreement with those conditions. Sorry. Is that correct, Mr. Goodwin?
I, I didn't know the extent of trying to do it from like a ground-up property, being that it is considered, it's 58-year-old, potentially 58-year-old building. But I will certainly, if that's what I need to do in order to be approved, to keep the property intact, then I will certainly do that.
So that answers a yes to complying or to agreeing to those five conditions. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So I think that sums it up.
But I got a question on the, on the first one. It seems contradictory to, because it's asking me to comply with setbacks and things, and that's what the whole variance is about.
Uh, let me, let me get that. Conformist to all minimum requirements under-
Exactly.
LVMC Title 19 dot 040 dot 10.
Yes. So as long as that's varied-
Sir, that is not setback requirement.
That's not?
No.
Okay. I'm sorry, I'm not in planning department. I certainly don't mean to be uneducated in my-
That's not what it is.
So if you're agreeing to those conditions, it's going to happen within 90 days. And if, and it shall be voided after one year, the date from the final inspection. And so if you're agreeing to those conditions, I'm ready to support it because you are saying what we're asking you to, to do, that you're going to do, and it's going to be done by city inspectors, which I have all the confidence in the world that they're going to do it and they're going to look out for the best interests of public safety and the fire and all this stuff.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
If there's not any more questions, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion on it.
If I may, just one point of clarification. I want to make sure that the commission has the correct information. With regard to the discussion of electrical being the requirement for the SUP. The SUP is required because the, the 220 that the applicant wishes to retain in the house allows for a kitchen. The SUP is required because this unit can have a kitchen in it, and that is why there is an SUP. It is not with regard to laundry facilities.
Very good.
No further discussion, then our motion's ready.
Mr. Chairman, on item 28, VAR 33775, I'd move for approval subject to all staff's recommendations and conditions.
Motion's been made. Please cast your votes. Post. Motion carries.
And on item 29, SUP 33981, move for approval, subject to all staff's recommendations and conditions.
Motion's been made. Please cast your vote. Post. That motion carries.
And the matters go forward to the City Council on May 20th. And if the applicant has any questions, please get with staff so that you understand all of the conditions.
And I can, I can apply for those permits tomorrow and get that moving before City Council hearing?
No, sir. You wait until after City Council approves your items.
Does my 90 days start today or does it-
No, sir.
It starts after City Council?
This is only a recommendation.
Okay.
At this point, the actual action would be taken by the City Council.
Thank you. And would Dave, Dave be a good point of contact with that? He's been-
The gentleman right here would be a great point of contact.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We now, we now move item number 30 and companion item 31, 32, and 33. Item number 30 is RQR 32942. The applicant owner is 305 West Las Vegas LLC, or 305 Las Vegas LLC, for a 40-foot-tall 14-by-48-foot off-premise sign at 330 East Charleston Boulevard. Item number 31 is special use permit 336-
That's not me.
Oh, they're not all companions. Okay, sorry. 30 alone.
Mr. Chairman, staff finds the continuation of the off-premise sign billboard at this location has not been conducive to the redevelopment and revitalization of the subject site. Therefore, staff is recommending denial. Please note additional letters of protest have been received after the publishing. Thank you.
Good evening.
Thank you. I'd like to declare the public hearing open. Anyone in attendance wishing to speak on the matter, please address the, approach the microphone and give your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Good evening. Ryan Arnold, 2620 Regatta Drive, here tonight representing the applicant CBS Outdoor. First off, I want to make the obvious statement, we're aware that this property owner has been approved for a new development there. We're also aware that they've come in and asked for an extension. I'm merely here asking tonight that you approve this use until there's further action on the property. And I also need to make clarification in the staff report. It said it was a 14-by-48. It's a 14-by-24.
Thank you. It's what the item says. So it's less, so the posting is okay? Okay. Thank you. Anyone else in attendance wishing to speak on this item?
Thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. If this is approved, how many years does this run before they have to come back?
Three is the proposal.
Three.
Anyone else in attendance wishing to speak on the matter? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed and turn it over to the planning commissioners for discussion and possible motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to abstain on the item as much as I do own a property in the notice area.
Mr. Chairman?
Please.
If there's no discussion, it's my opinion that the area hasn't changed yet and the applicant has suggested that they would revisit it. I think the review period is an additional 36 months. And I would be pleased to make the motion for approval with the understanding that in 36 months, the matter would be revisited and you would come back again and we'll see how the area has changed.
Sounds great.
Yes, motion for approval.
Motion's been made. Please cast your votes. Motion carries.
That goes forward to council on May 20th.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Now we go to item number 31, which is a special use permit 33611. The applicant owner is Hector Camacho, for proposed motor vehicle sales used establishment at 4561 East Bonanza Road, Suite 125. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is proposing a used motor vehicle sales dealership within an existing storage space that will be converted into a sales office. The subject site already houses a number of intense uses and was previously granted a variance for parking. Placing an additional use on the subject site in addition to the existing and approved uses will create an overly developed site and will negatively impact the surrounding neighborhood. Therefore, staff is recommending denial of this request. Please note additional letters of protest have been received after the publishing. Thank you.
Thank you. Now I'd like to declare the public hearing open and invite anyone in attendance wishing to speak on the matter to approach the microphone and give your name and address for the record. Mr. Camacho?
Hector Camacho, 247 White Waterfall, Henderson, Nevada.
And your position on the matter? Staff recommendation is for denial.
It's not a big surprise because, but anyhow, I don't see for the deny. You're going to be car park. We fix cars and we got plenty of rooms for parked cars, okay? If the economy not coming that way, I never come to apply for this license. I need to get this license because I need to make my back payment. So far, I ain't got a bit to do it, but I'm behind on rent every month and I try to balance my budget. Only can I ask here, is try to sell few cars and to survive through the economy. It's up to you, you know, if you want to approve me C2 as comparable for a used car lot, okay? There's nothing else I can say. The only thing I, like I said, like I told many years ago, when I come here, I come here to try to, to make an honest living, not, not to sell drugs and not to go to welfare or do anything else, okay? I think that's not going to be a big impact to neighbors because it's car park. We fix car. We got 40, 50 cars every day. Not going to be any different from outside to have a three-car for sale or five-car for sale or 20-car for repairs, okay? I leave it in your hands and I got nothing else to say. Thanks.
Thank you very much. The public hearing is open. Anyone else wishing to speak on the matter? Please give your name and address for the record.
Yes, thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. I concur with staff.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing none, we'll declare the public hearing closed and turn it over to the planning commissioners for discussion and motion.
Mr. Camacho, I, I don't know what to tell you. I know we've been round and round with this, with this shopping center with various uses, but I just think it would be horrendously disingenuous to this neighborhood and surrounding areas to put a used car lot here. You will not see my, my support on this at all.
Okay. I can't, I can't change your mind, but if you're car, the only thing I ask you different, what do you be the difference to have a 305 car to sell or 304 car to repair? I can't, I can't see the difference, okay? When I came, when I was here the last time, I was approved by Black Mountain Bank, almost $3 million loan. Three weeks and my loan, it was disapproved. I need to make a living, okay? If you're not going to approve, it's fine, okay? I'm going, I'm going to keep fighting, but it's not a surprise.
Let me ask you, are all, all your buildings in this shopping center occupied currently?
I got, if my, all my building, it was occupied, I never come to apply for the license. I lost 30% of my tenants and I have to lower rent. My income is about 30 to 35% less. I used to collect 20, 21,000. Now barely, I do 14,000. My payment is $12,000 on the property, okay?
Well, I'm looking at this strictly from a land use, and I don't think the property-
I got plenty, I got plenty parking because I got parking bill for my next project. By my next project, I don't know if you ever going to be bill.
Well, I just don't think this is appropriate spot for a used car lot. I'm sorry.
Okay. I can't, I can't change your mind and I can't, you know, whatever. It's not a-
Mr. Chairman, you ready for a motion?
It's not a surprise, but the only, the only thing I was asking, maybe it can be a little more lenient because you, we need to put Las Vegas back to work, not to put it back. You people getting laid off, people in the building department getting laid off, the people getting laid off, people in the building department getting laid off, the fire department getting laid off. When the people come to asking for the work, always you're going to deny, because I've been watching all night long, okay, like that guy want to put a four piece, four, nothing to do it with me, but he wants to do it, just put Las Vegas back to work, and not to try to gong against it, because you need to change your policy. I'm going to, I'm going to have a meeting with all the city council, the mayors, and I hope I can get it with the media.
Very good.
We needed, Las Vegas, he needed to change a policy a little bit, to be a little more lenient, to make the people back to work, not to get, I hope you, I would like you to come with the neighborhood, through all the business, to see how it is to make a living today.
I was in that neighborhood today when I rode by, when I rode by and looked at it, and I also talked to a couple of people, and I wanted to point out, one lady that says there's enough crime in the neighborhood already, and there's helicopters that fly over already. We do this strictly from a land use perspective, you know, and that's what we're doing, what's best for the neighborhood and the surrounding areas. Everybody's struggling now, everybody's struggling with the economy each and every day, we understand that, but from a land use perspective, this is not the proper use to put twenty to twenty-five cars, and then have flags up and down the sidewalk.
You already, you already put it, and I put, I told him, I don't want to put a flag, I don't need to put a flag to sell the cars.
Okay.
Okay, stop, the cars, the parking, the parking space, the only thing, and I can't, I can't pitch it, what do you tell me? If you want to be five car for sales, you're not going to be five car for repair, because a parking lot only can handle so many cars. Not be any different for driving in the street, or from the name of the lot.
But where are all the other tenants going to park, if you have twenty-five cars parked stationary for sale? Where's everybody else going to park that needs to come park in the shopping center?
It's enough parking for the customers, okay? The customers, he come to repair the car. I got sixty, I got forty percent vacancy, thirty-five, forty percent vacancy, you can go, you can walk on to come tomorrow to my property and show all the empty parking spots I got, because I overbill the parkings. Okay, I got plenty parking lot, I got more what I needed, because I bill already for my next project, but the next project, I know, if I ever can build my next project, be no car sales, I don't need it to sell cars.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Camacho.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Anyone else have any input? Otherwise, we're ready for a motion. I think we're ready for the motion, please.
Move to follow staff recommendation for denial.
Motion's been made, please cast your votes.
Thank you, and I feel better, because if you approve it, I'd be scared, because I never been approve anything for you guys anyhow. Thank you, have a good night.
And that denial is final action in the absence of an appeal within ten days.
Okay, we now move to item number thirty-two, special use permit thirty-three seven forty-three. The applicant is Leon Hacker, the owner is Ellico Stewart Enterprises, Inc., for a second-hand dealers, let class three jewelry and precious metals within an existing financial institution specified at forty-three ninety-nine Stewart Avenue, Suite one-fifty. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, staff finds that this use will be compatible and harmonious with the current business and the surrounding land uses, and is recommending pre-approval. Please note, we have received additional comments after posting.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I'd like to declare the public hearing open and ask anyone in attendance that wish to make a comment, please approach the microphone and give your name and address for the record. Sir?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, ladies and gentlemen. Leon Hacker is my name, I reside at one-two-two Ultra Drive, Henderson. The prevailing adverse economy unfortunately has severely impacted small businesses, particularly mine, so as a consequence, one explores other avenues to try and improve and facilitate one's business. It is necessary for me therefore to make application for the special use permit, and I consequently trust that you will approve the application.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in attendance wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed and turn the matter over to the planning commissioners for discussion and possible motion.
Mr. Chairman, I think I'm ready to make a motion if there's no objection, but I did want to ask a question. Will you be selling firearms at this location?
Certainly not.
Okay, very good. My motion would be to follow the recommendation of the staff for approval, subject to all conditions.
Motion's been made, please cast your vote. Post.
Commissioner going.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Marksman carries.
And that matter goes forward to city council on May twentieth.
I thank you very much.
Item number thirty-three is special use permit thirty-three seven fifty-five. The applicant owner is Douglas B. Kays et al., for proposed recreational vehicle storage facility with a waiver to allow a six-foot screening device where eight feet is required at seventeen-seventeen South Decatur Boulevard. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, staff finds that without the required screening devices and landscaping, that the use cannot be conducted in a compatible and harmonious manner with the residential to the east, and therefore recommends denial. Please note, we have received additional comments after the posting.
Thank you. Now I'd like to declare the public hearing open. Anyone in attendance wish to speak on this item? Please approach the microphone and give your name and address for the record.
Sarah Kopnik, fifty-six fifteen Cameron, on behalf of the applicant, and with me is Sam Present, he is a co-owner of the property. What I'd like to say to start out with is, we appreciate the opportunity to come and present our case before you. The economic situation right now, as you are aware, in Las Vegas is pretty challenging, and because of that, the Fantastic Swap Meet has basically lost the opportunity to continue leasing space to vehicles. The approved use, we had a special use permit earlier, in order to allow the lease of vehicles in the area, or not lease, but a storage of vehicles for sale, and because the car dealer went under and closed their doors, so to speak, they removed the vehicles. So, because the lot is very large, and the parking has already been enclosed, we are asking for the opportunity to go ahead and put in a RV parking facility in that area. It's not going to be for sales, and it's not going to be providing to a company, it would be to private individuals that would like to store their RVs in the location. The issue that has come up, it's an allowable use on the property, but the issue that has come up is the fencing. There are currently around the property, six-foot fences all the way around the property, and the rear property that's in question, I wanted to show you this, right now, the, I can't talk into this at the same time, so...
The center mics should work.
Center mics, okay. So, basically, what we're looking at here, I brought you some pictures, but basically, this right here, the scale right here, shows you that this is where the lot is going to be, where it's actually existing, it's fenced in. All the way on these three sides is chain link fence, it's basically the covered chain link, so it's a screen fence, six and a half feet all the way around. On this section right here, there's existing housing, and what's happened is the housing out here is, a lot of it is, been around for a while, it's older homes, and they have a block wall along the back here. The block wall, for the most part, is between six and eight feet, and because it's between six and eight feet, it's not a total screen wall. In order to go in and put up block wall on this area would be challenging, because since the walls are already in existence right now, we can't just go in and simply put block on top of the walls. We would have to go ahead and redo the entire footings for the walls. So instead of that, the alternative would be to put the eight-foot, put in an eight-foot fence on the portion that would be closer to where the RVs are being stored. We have a twenty-five-foot easement right here, is this too small for everybody to see?
We're okay, thank you.
Right in this area, there's a twenty-five-foot easement. This twenty-five-foot easement comes up against the block wall, and this is a drainage easement. You can look at, this picture right here, shows you that all these properties on the back of this easement are lower, the houses are actually below the lot level. So basically, they've been dropped. In their backyards, in many cases, they are already at eight-foot-high fences, from their point of view. Some of the lots are different heights, and so some of them are six-foot, so we're going back and forth between six and eight foot. It's difficult, because the lot's not level back there, we've got a drainage area. So what I have done is, I've gone ahead and done a kind of a line of sight right here for you. The top is a picture of what would happen if you were standing, these lots are, most of the backyards are at about twenty-foot deep. The setbacks in there average around twenty foot. Some of them are fifteen, some of them are twenty-five, but they average around twenty foot. So assuming that you're about six-foot tall, most people aren't, and you're standing right outside your backyard, looking straight across, what you would see in your line of sight, with the RVs, this right is a twenty-five-foot drainage easement, this is your backyard. So the first point you would see, the RVs would be right here. If we put the screen wall right here, an eight-foot-high screen wall right here, what's going to happen is, they're going to get six inches that it's going to block of these RVs, and the area up above, the footage above would still be visible, even with the screen wall, with an eight-foot screen wall. On the properties that have the eight-foot in their backyard, there's absolutely no problem, but what could conceivably happen, if they already have an eight-foot wall, if we tried to go in here and put in an eight-foot wall, some of those properties could conceivably end up with ten-foot walls on their backyards. It's because the lot is uneven, it's hard to explain, but it's an uneven lot, so it causes challenges. In order to put the fence across the back, it's going to be probably more detrimental to the people to have the fence put back there, and not only that, but it would be financially prohibitive, it would prevent the development of the property. It's going to sit with nothing in it, and challenge and cause continuing financial challenges to the owners if it doesn't get, if we don't get some use out of it in this way. Vehicles are not, shorter vehicles are not an option. On the other sides of the yard, of the lot, we have, this is a picture here, if you can see it. The trees are all bigger now, but you can see that when you're looking at this, this entire side of the road, that it runs along, parallel to, parallel to the public area, would be not visible because of the trees. The trees are going to be large enough to cover this and screen this entire area here. The remainder of the yard, where they're going to store, is actually, this area here, is actually owned by Fantastic, and it's just parking area here. So really, in reality, there's only one area that's affected, and that's over here, and it's parking. The rest of it, if we go in and put in eight-foot-high fences, it's going to be a challenge, and it's going to be expensive, and it really doesn't prove out to be necessary when you look at the reality of the lot situation.
Thank you. Anyone else in attendance wish to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed and turn it over to the planning commissioners for discussion. What, let me ask, the first thing we'd like is some support from the neighbors, you know, the people that you say are not going to be impacted. We have nine, we have six people that have protested the proposal. Have you made efforts to go around and talk to them and get their support for your business concept?
We have not done that at this time, because we were not aware of that.
Your neighbors don't like it.
Well, I understand that, I, we can go ahead and follow up and discuss it with them.
I think that would be an excellent idea.
But we would have attended an earlier hearing, or earlier, what do you call it, the community meetings, if we had realized that there was any kind of question, and tried to find out what their issues were, because I believe if we discussed it with the neighbors, they would probably realize that this is not going to impact them negatively. They probably, I don't know what their arguments are, so I really don't, can't speak to any of their specific concerns at this point.
Mr. Trusdale, if you, you can refresh my memory, because it seems to me we've gone around and around on this site, and I recall that at one point years ago, I think it was a car dealership, and we allowed storage, but we required some trees along Oki, and I think they had died, and then we had them replant them or something, and I'm trying to remember, this has been a contentious, a contentious piece over the years, but you, with your incredible memory, would probably know better than I.
The only good thing is, it's not quite as contentious as Mr. Camacho's parcel. I mean, a car storage is not going to solve the issues. This property's been sitting less than stellar for these years. I mean, it's a swap meet, it's, landscaping's always deficient, it's just been very little kind of commitment to the neighbors, and here we are again, and you haven't reached out to the neighbors. You're making assumptions that they wouldn't want that wall repaired, rather than talking to them and seeing if they'd want that wall at a certain height. I mean, if the neighbors are saying, hey, put the wall up, we're in support of it, I'd be sitting here saying, hey, well, that's a reason to approve this. And, you know, I'm amazed, all we hear is the economy, the economy, the economy is no reason for us to throw our zoning code out the door, because this economy will turn around, and we're stuck with the zoning decisions we make.
That's a very good point, Commissioner Trusdale, and I drove through that parking lot, and I've visited it this week, and then I drove to the neighborhood to the east of it, and what I thought of was, if I lived in one of those homes, if I would want to be looking out my backyard, you know, and looking at motorhome storage, and the answer is no. And so, I'm going to, without further discussion, follow staff's recommendation for denial on this project, simply because of the fact that we can't change our zoning standards just because the economy's bad, because when it turns around, those homes are still going to be there, those kids are still going to be playing in that backyard, and your motorhomes are still going to be parked back there, and I wouldn't feel good about it. So, I'm going to follow staff's recommendation, if nobody else has anything else to say.
Commissioner Quinn, through you, Mr. Chairman, real quickly, she had asked, what did the neighbors think? I just wanted to read one of these opposition, it just said, okay, if you keep the fence at eight feet or more, but I do not want to look out at somebody else's stuff every day. So that's an opinion of a neighbor that's in the neighborhood, and that's Steve and Sharon Goldman, so I just want to put that on the record.
Right, and while I'm here, as I'm asking this, the, because we wrapped this application for the special use in with the waiver, what I also need to know is, if we were able to accommodate that wall, and put that screen wall in there some way or other, if we can figure out a way to engineer it in there, and to the neighbors' approval, will we be able to get the special use permit approved for? When we applied for the special use permit, it was originally just for the special use permit, but then it came up that we needed to have the eight-foot-high fencing. So am I hearing that you're saying that we can't have the special use permit because of the eight-foot-high fencing issue, or if we just simply can't have the special use permit? Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yes.
If we, if we address the fencing issue to the satisfaction, is there going to be another obstacle to us getting approval on this?
My answer is that this is not the proper zoning for this site, no matter how high the fence is, period. So I would like to follow staff's recommendation for denial of this.
Okay, a motion has been made, so please cast your vote, and post. Motion for denial carries.
And that denial is final action in the absence of an appeal to the office of the city clerk within ten days.
We now move to item number thirty-six. The site development review thirty-three seven fifty-six. The applicant is SL Investments, owner is Seabreeze Village Two LLC, for a two-thousand seven-hundred-and-eighty-three-square-foot restaurant with drive-through, with a waiver to allow a five-foot landscape buffer along a one-hundred-and-sixty-foot portion of the west perimeter, where fifteen feet is required, at the northeast corner of Vegas Drive and Buffalo Drive. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, since the original application has been submitted, the applicant has revised their site plan, and now the waiver is no longer necessary. As such, staff is now recommending approval of the application, as it meets the requirements of Title Nineteen, including parking setbacks and the landscape standards. Please note, we have received additional comments after posting.
Mr. Chairman, I've stayed on this item since I'm currently working with this Carl's operator on another location.
Thank you. We now like to declare the public hearing open and invite anyone in attendance that wish to speak on the matter to approach the microphone and give your name and address for the record. On behalf of the applicant?
Chairman Commissioners, Mark Martino, GGW Architects, seventy-six twenty-five Dean Martin, here representing the applicant. We have, are in concurrence, are in agreement with all staff conditions, and are here for your approval.
If there's no discussion...
Just a second, let me, anyone else in attendance wish to speak on the matter?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Todd Farlow, two-forty North Nineteenth Street. I've just got a question here. Is this going to be close to residential? And I put this out there, because if you go back some years ago, we had a problem with some loudspeakers, you know, where they're doing, and did we ever put a limit on the decibels on that, if they're within a vicinity of housing? I just wonder whatever happened to that. Thank you.
Thank you. These outdoor speakers do fall under the privy of the ordinance, noise ordinance, don't they?
Yes, they do, but in the city of Las Vegas, there is no decibel limit on noise. It's determined by a reasonable person, at seventy-five feet.
Thank you. Now, if there's no other individuals who wish to speak on the matter, I'll declare the public hearing closed and turn it over to the planning commissioner for discussion and possible motion.
If no one else wants to speak, I've visited that corner, and it sits in an Albertson's parking lot, it's way farther away from residential of more than seventy-five feet, and I'd like to follow all of staff's recommendations, and approve SDR three-three seven-five-six. Keeping intact that beautiful, all the landscape, because it really looks nice around there, so I hope you follow suit and keep it looking as nice as it is.
Yeah, we are, we're actually adding to that, too.
Okay, thank you.
Sounds good.
If I may just check one thing, the date on the site plan is still May, rather, April third, is that correct?
That is correct, we received those revisions in time to do that.
Motion's been made, please cast your votes. Post.
Commissioner Trusdale?
He said abstention. Motion carries with Mr. Trusdale's abstention.
And that is final action in the absence of appeal. It's in 10 days.
Thank you.
We now move to item number 37, which is a site development review 33-785. The applicant owner is the International Church of Las Vegas. It's for an existing temporary modular building for an existing church at 8100 West Cliff Drive. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, this temporary modular building has received two extensions in the past. The applicant is requesting an additional extension for two years. Staff notes that the continued usage of this structure on the site creates an aesthetically disjointed site that is not harmonious with the surrounding neighborhood and is recommending denial. Please note, we have received additional comments since publication. If approved, staff would like to revise condition number 37 to read as follows. All developments shall be in conformance with the site plan date span, I'm sorry, condition number four, all developments shall be in conformance with the site plan date stamp 031109, and building elevation photographs date stamp 31209, except as amended by conditions herein.
Thank you. Now I declare the public hearing open. Anyone in attendance wish to speak on the matter, please approach the microphone and give your name for the record. On behalf of the applicant, we have?
My name is Levi Parker, 4353 Governors Hill, here representing the applicant, International Church of Las Vegas, ICLV. And for starters, I just want to say good evening, Chairman and Commissioners, and thank you for the time tonight, and thank you for, on a side note, all the time for Prayer Mountain. Appreciate that. But just wanted to come here and a few points that I wanted to make off the bat was, one, we did review staff's report and appreciated their report, and did have a chance to speak with the applicant and the church. And it looked like the common theme that we had seen through the staff report in the six findings, really was the aesthetic appearance in comparison with the surrounding buildings. And so right off the bat, as a solution to that, the applicant would agree to a condition to upgrade the appearance so that it matched the surrounding buildings. And being that that is actually a leased modular, they couldn't go through and do the same upgrades they did with the other modular, the other buildings, but at least have the same paint, the same appearance, so there was no distractions, and that it was cohesive with the surrounding buildings.
Thank you. Anyone else in attendance wish to speak on the matter?
Yes, thank you. Todd Farley, 240 North 19th Street. Commissioner Quinn, when your husband was sitting on this board years and years and years ago, he left us with the old adage, "There is nothing so permanent as a temporary building."
That's correct. Anyone else in attendance wish to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed and turn over the planning commissioners for discussion and possible motion.
I just have a question for the applicant. Is there a ramp for a disabled person or a wheelchair or an elderly person to get into that building?
Yes, there is.
Thank you.
Just a few, Mr. Chairman. Got a lot of opposition here, but just wanted to let you be aware, you may want to take it back to the pastor, y'all probably saving souls, and that's a good thing for church to do. However, there's a little, couple complaints about too much noise and not enough security. And just noise, noise, noise. So if you could take that back to the church, maybe during those delicate hours on Sunday when people are trying to prepare for the beginning of the week, you may want to tone it down a little bit.
Absolutely, and I will take that back to them.
Because I'm from a ward that we shout.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if there's no further discussion, I think, if I'm not mistaken, there's a period of which this would be expunged, is that correct?
Two years, I believe.
Two years? Okay. And you're in agreement with that?
Yeah, that was a 24-month extension.
And my motion would be to approve this with that period of two years where the matter would be reviewed. And is the change to the?
Yes, they changed as read, condition number four.
Reflecting that change is amended by the staff.
A motion's been made, please cast your vote. Motion carries.
And that is final action in the absence of appeal. It's in 10 days.
Thank you, Chairman and Commission.
We now move to item number 38. It's an abeyance and a notification for a text. It's 33-703. The applicant owner is the city of Las Vegas. Discussing possible action to amend Title 19.04 Table 2 and 19.20 to revise regulations, applicable zoning districts and distribution, description, sorry, of small wind energy systems use. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chair and members of the Commission, Flynn Fag with the Planning Department here with you again. We have made some changes to the text amendment since we were last together visiting this item. And let me just go through those changes briefly with you. Number one, in terms of the permitted districts where this would be allowed, we've expanded that list to include both the R1 district and residential districts, and the PR district under our commercial and office districts. In terms of minimum lot area, we've since taken away the requirement of a minimum lot size of two acres, and now no longer have a minimum lot size. In terms of the height, we've put in a gradated variation in heights for the zoning districts where there are smaller properties, a 50-foot height limit, up to our zoning districts where there are typically larger properties, a 90-foot height limit. In terms of the setbacks, we've also made reductions in the proposed setbacks there. If I could go to the overhead, as you can see here under our previous proposal, with a setback based on the tower height, the setback was 1.1 times the tower height, this is looking at a standard C1 commercial parcel. It left you with very little area, the shaded area there at the center, to place the tower. What we've done is reduced the setbacks to 0.9 times the tower height. And so that does give you a little bit more flexibility in terms of the placement of the tower itself. And there's also a restriction relative to setbacks from existing habitable structures. In terms of colocations of uses, we've added some language there to say that no colocation is permitted. We've also added language relative to restrictions against any additional signage on the tower itself. And that more or less summarizes some of the changes that we have made to the proposed ordinance. And I'll go ahead and take your questions.
We need a public hearing on this? Okay, now I declare the public hearing open and invite anyone in attendance who wishes to speak on the matter to approach the microphone and give your name and record, name and address for the record.
Thank you. Todd Farley, 240 North 19th Street. Just a question here. What is the smallest R1 lot size that we have in Las Vegas? Can anybody tell me that?
Mr. Chairman, through you, 6,500 square feet.
Thank you very much.
Gentlemen?
Alan McLean, I own McLean Electric, 3624 North Rancho. We're just here in support of everything that's going on with the renewable energy. We think this stuff is great right here. We recommend approval, you know, on our side, that we think is, as far as bringing these things down to where anybody can put them on their land. It's a, it's a great thing, and we support everything that you do for it. And thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Terry Bias, Sun Valley Automotive, at 4553 North Rancho. Again, just what Alan's saying, it was really kind of nice to everybody take a look at this and realize that lot size was leaving out a lot of people. So with Mr. Obama speaking the other day, and it's kind of cool that everybody's going on to the, to the green thing. So, thank you very much.
Very good. Okay, now if there's no one else who wishes to speak, I'll declare the public hearing closed and turn over the planning commissioners for discussion and possible motion. First comment I would make is 100% support for the concept of green energy, and all the renewable energy concepts and technologies are out there. And would simply mention for the record that any concerns that people might have regarding the noise that might be secondary to the turbines or the cylindrical type improvements would still be subject to our noise ordinance, which as was previously stated, is reasonable within 75 feet. And so having said that, anyone else have a discussion, comment, or want to make a motion?
Well, if nobody has comments, I have a few. I truly believe this is a great technology, and I truly believe the city needs to do something. State law says that we should have renewable, the small wind energy systems. Not called turbines, they're called small wind energy systems. And it seems like we're designing our code with the basic premise that we're going to put towers with blades on them, rather than, there's probably, and I sent this to the staff, I don't know if it's available, but I'll be glad to provide it to the clerk, there are probably 100 different small energy systems, of which a significant number of them mount onto the homes that are six to eight feet tall, generate more energy than the typical wind turbine that is envisioned here, wouldn't fit with these setbacks the way they are. I mean, because it has to be so far from the house or whatever, the way I read the code. It seems like we have such a great opportunity to create a real initiative for a community and let Las, the city of Las Vegas be the absolute leader in how this works in our community. It just is amazing to me that our first bite at this is the minimums. Because I really believe if this is what we pass, the way it's constructed, and I know staff spent a lot of hours on this, and a lot of time, a lot of research, this is the most restrictive or most proactive we will be. I mean, going forward is, well, you let this happen, you can't, you can't take it away from me. We have the setback on commercial that show, there are great systems that go on top of commercial buildings that really the setback is somewhat insignificant. But when we talk about residential, the setback should be greater, because you have neighbors, you have other issues that play into this. Some of these systems have a higher rate of bird kill. No one raises that question, but it is a function of our, there are systems out there that can be placed, attached to medium-sized trees. You will never see that system, but the wind through the trees, it produces great energy. And it seems like we don't want to restrict the size of the parcel. I can't imagine every R1 parcel going down Sixth Street, historic John S. Park, having 50-foot pinwheels above it. And we, we don't want houses on R1 lots greater than 35 feet, and that's to the pitch of the house, can't be more than two stories. But our first blush at wind energy is, we're at 50 feet. And our PR and whatever, we're at 65 feet. And then 90 feet, I think, was the cap down. The Department of Energy, who's spent more time and energy on this stuff, is talking about a lot of these systems fitting in a 35-foot height. And you can go to their webpage and that, the state law requires in, at least the summary of the state law, talks about common community or planned communities having a minimum of two acres. And our, and our blush on this ordinance goes, I think shoots right past that. So I'm, my question is, would a community like Summerlin suddenly be able to put this on every R1 lot? And if we could look at the benefits of this and look at how we can be creative in our community, I'd love to show you half a dozen commercial buildings where you could, one in particular, I know that the building department, or the, what is it, our building service building, where your staff is right now, is taking over a mid-rise building at some point for their relocation. There are systems designed, very functional, that stand six, eight feet above the roofline, that could go along the roof of that building, be almost unnoticed, but generate a greater amount of power than us creating a code that just promotes pinwheels. So I hope we would have more dialogue, I hope we'd have more interaction on this, because I think it's a, it's a critical step forward. Green is good, but green should be the quality of our community. It shouldn't be the dollars that go into the trade. Because if you look at what the trade puts out, it says less, no government control, no lot size restrictions, no noise issues, no setbacks. There's, there is a balance between fully regulated, everything's on the government side, or everything's on the business side. And we have a chance to make a great solution here.
There were a couple of questions. So, Mr. Trusdale, to summarize, one of your recommendations would be that we should not require separation between the structure and the turbine. So in other words, it can be directly mounted on structures, is what you would prefer to see?
Small wind energy system.
Small wind energy system.
Subtly different than the turbine.
So your recommendation is that it could be mounted directly on a building, and that's the language that you'd prefer to see in the proposed text?
I think in the right design, it could be.
Okay.
And there are, where these fit, they look like the existing wind turbines on ranch estates now. But that's, that's not, let's change the code and then wind up having a 50-foot tower with no distance separation from the building.
And, and that was one of the things that we had discussed when this was presented before. We talked about accommodating, because I've seen the small systems that are about the size of a 55-gallon barrel that work quite efficiently for a home use, and could be mounted on a roof very easy. And I think that we'd be serving ourselves a wear if we could accommodate that type of technology.
Well, certainly we don't prohibit that.
That was the way I always read the ordinance first, but apparently Commissioner Trusdale looked at it as being restrictive in some capacity, and I think that we should maybe put inclusive language, but make sure that it can be there, makes it clearer.
Mr. Chairman, didn't the lady on item 13, when she mentioned the metal roof, said that that was some type of wind energy system that was up there making some noise?
Yes, she had a couple, there's like two or three about a block away.
Right. I, after the last meeting, I stopped by Mr. McLean's shop and got a pretty in-depth lesson on, on green energy. He's got a great display model up there of solar panels that he actually uses to teach with, and he was able to plug it in and pull it out into the sun, and you could see when it hit the panel, the meter on there started spinning immediately, which means it was generating. Also, he has the, I call it the big propeller-type system, which is up there. And it's pretty neat, when I sat and talked with him about how you place these in residential areas, where it has to face south, and they have, I don't know what kind of meter it's called, but it will, it will actually orientate you where the best place to put it. So, but I had a great time up at his place. It's pretty interesting. I encourage anybody to go up there and take a look. And he even gave my six-year-old son a little couplet and a spring, which he's playing with today, and so I think he's going to be the next energy guru. So, thank you, Mr. McLean.
Having said that, where do we go? Do we?
Let me ask, if I may. The, the question is, if I understand correctly, is whether or not, as written right now, it allows for the small systems to be located directly on the building? Is that correct? That's the question?
Would it be permitted or prohibited?
Mr. Chairman, and I would add, though, I would think, though, that in a neighborhood, you would prefer that, rather than say, is it allowed?
Right, and that's what I'm at. Flynn, is you, is that in here or not?
Yes, it's under item, excuse me, under conditional use regulations, number four, no part of a system, including guy wires, may be closer to any structure than 10 feet. And so with that language, we would need to remove that if.
So, but that could be of a freestanding system, as opposed to, and then an additional bullet would be that for a mounted system, and then we'd need some language with regard to that, correct? So would it be the Commission's pleasure that we work on that issue? So, would it be the commission's pleasure that we work on that issue and then bring that back to you at your next meeting, so that you have the opportunity to see the exact language that we would add?
I would, and I, I'm, I'm new to this. I would be, like to see examples of what we're talking about.
Well, if I could, could, could we ask Mr. McLean, who's, who's installed these systems or knows a little bit about it, in terms of small systems and how close they may need to be, to be efficient on, on a building?
Well, Flynn can certainly, they can exchange parts and all that right now.
We're not going to rewrite the document tonight, but I, I think that there are people that are in the business, there's people in the, in the trades that can make suggestions, there's contractors that, that do it, there's manufacturers that sell the things. Although I think that we do need to find the compromise between no way and any way. And so we need to find the compromised position. I think that we can leave that up to you to, to develop the appropriate language that will make us all satisfied, we've reached an appropriate middle ground.
Is May fourteenth too soon, or what would be, that's?
Fourteenth is probably cutting it pretty close, if you ask me.
The report would have to be finished on Friday, would it not?
No, you're not going to make that.
It's three weeks.
Twenty-nine? Hence why, that's why I'm looking at them.
Well, and the other thing is, you know, the other things that, that we look at as well, not just, you know, what's going on, but everybody that came up here was talking about how bad the economy is, right? How horrible it is. Well, you're talking about putting things up tomorrow that can create work. I mean, it's, it's pretty simple. And the, you're only talking about, the ones you're talking about putting on the buildings and things like that.
Is this Mr. McLean? Is this, who are you? Are you the, you're the guy that was here before, right?
Yeah, I came, I came here last month.
Yeah, I, I, let me get control of the meeting here. We're going to rewrite the thing, we're not going to do it. I made the suggestion that we get together with people that have expertise, like yourself, people, the manufacturers, there's, Bombard Electric is a local contract that's been in business for a million years, that have put in the ones out at Nellis. IBW has a, a wind structure on their training facility. And we need to get some of those folks together, you know, and, and talk about it and come up with a nice compromised position. Where, and I interpreted the, the document one way, Commissioner Truesdale interpreted another, and we're trying to be permissive and not be restrictive. And so it's just finding that fine middle ground and wordsmithing the language in the ordinance.
And I think that one that is at the hall, is kind of the one that you're kind of writing this around.
There's new technology since that.
Right.
So, I think that we're just trying to give staff direction on, on who they might contact and approach, rather than the specifics tonight.
Sure. And, and the other ones that you guys are talking about also, I don't know if they're all approved by like Nevada Power when you're tying them into the grid. And the ones that you guys are looking at, like the one that is at the hall, at the Union Hall, those are approved to, to be able to tie into the grid, you know? So there, there are a couple little questions.
Maybe each of the magic words in the, in the document says once approved, or those that are approved by, you know?
Sure.
That's just, that's what we're talking about.
But if somebody wants to be creative and deal with the technology and come up with a, a system that fits within a building, we should, we should encourage that creativeness, not just whether they get a few bucks back from Nevada Power. I mean, to be honest with you.
Right.
Because what, a lot of these, if you look at the data that the Department of Energy gives out, and you know this, you can buy the smaller ones for six-hundred-and-ninety-five bucks and put them on a pole in your backyard and you might generate enough power to, to light the pool light.
Right.
And never get anything back from Nevada Power, but everybody's worried about the power credits, if you will. I'm sitting here as a, a planning commissioner, we need to look at land use issues and what is a best land use plan when we look at, we do that when we look at every house. We, we look at, when we look at the height of fences. Not, not some of these other extraneous issues, but how can we make our community, our aesthetics? I don't want us to do what we did, we spent a lot of time talking about cell towers when we closed one loop and wound up with fifty-foot pine trees everywhere.
Sure.
If there's a, an appropriate way to do this and without giving away everything for the people that, that believe in green energy and green technology, but still want their neighborhood to feel like their neighborhood.
You bet. But it's good for the environment, I mean, that's, that's a great thing. I mean, you got, we got to start looking at that kind of stuff.
Recycling would, would save a bundle in this community, but.
Sure.
We don't do a lot of recycling here with Republic, do we?
There's a lot, well, there's actually a lot of other contractors. Wolf, Wolf, I think is the name of the one recycling, there's a lot of them starting up. And, you know, you got to let them, you got to push them through here. You got to be able to, you got to approve these things so people can start putting them in. If you don't approve them, nobody's going to start trying to use it.
We're, we're on your side on this thing.
And that's why I think you guys are doing a great job. I mean, this stuff here is excellent. So, we're just here for supporting every effort you guys do, so.
Thank you so much for your support. Okay, do we?
If I may ask the applicant, would you like to bring this back on May fourteenth or May twenty-eighth?
Either one is fine.
May twenty-eighth is my vote.
Okay, that's what they're saying.
We're not in a hurry, we're, we want to do it correctly, not quickly. So, make them, is that the request? Do you want to make motions? We have a motion?
Chairman, I'll make a motion to bring this matter back forward for the planning commission on May the twenty-eighth.
That's very good. Motion's been made. Please cast your votes. Post. Motion carries. We now move item number thirty-nine, which is the DIR thirty-three seven seventy-six. The applicant owner is the Mesquite Club, Inc., to designate the Mesquite Club Clubhouse as a historic property on the city of Las Vegas Historic Property Register, as approved by the Historic Preservation Commission, HPC thirty-two six oh one, at six oh, I'm sorry, seven oh two East, East St. Louis Avenue. Staff report please.
Mr. Chairman, the professional report has been done, the findings have been made, that the clubhouse structure is eligible as a, as an historic property, based not only on its architecture and location, but by the historical prominence of the members and their work over the time that the structure has been there. The report has been accepted and reviewed by the Historic Preservation Commission, and their recommendation is for the planning commission to approve of this designation and send that forward to the city council.
Thank you. Now I'd like to clear the public hearing open. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter, please approach the microphone and give your name for the record. On behalf of the, the item, we have?
Thank you, Chairman Trowbridge and members of the planning commission. I am Shirley Bailey, Chairman of Building and Grounds of Mesquite Club, and this is Adeline Jordan, Co-Chairman of Building and Grounds. And we very much look forward to obtaining the historic preservation as stated. We believe that the Mesquite Club is very deserving. Since nineteen-eleven, they have been an integral part of the city of Las Vegas. When there were only a hundred and fifty buildings in the entire city, and it was a tent city, Mesquite Club began its work in this city. There are about a hundred and forty-seven active members of the club now. And if you've been by the building, you, you have noticed that there is considerable work and restorative work to be done. And we've been looking into that, and Perini Building Company, a number of people in the city have come to our aid. We are supporting Nevada Partnership for the Homeless Youth this year, and it is very, very rewarding in our retiring years to be working with an organization that has such a history with members such as Helen J. Stewart. And all of the, the history is just absolutely fascinating to be a part of this organization. So that we thank the commission and Ms. Mooney and, and her work and working with us. And we look forward to getting this designation.
Thank you. Now that we're going to probably take action on this to approve it, I'd like to give you the opportunity to give a phone number, where if someone were to be willing to or interested in joining the Mesquite Club, which is known to be one of the most prestigious historical groups in the, in the entire valley, if you had a phone number where a prospective member might give you a call, it'd be a good time to get a plug in.
Thank you very much. Yes, they, they could call, they could call my number, and we would put them right to the membership chair. And we also have a website where they could go to the MesquiteClubLasVegas.com and, and get in touch with us. So that, my number is seven oh two, three-six oh, oh-three-six-seven.
Thank you very much. The public hearing is open. If anyone in attendance would like to speak, please approach the microphone and give your name for the record. Seeing none, we'll declare the public hearing closed and turn it over to the planning commissioners for discussion and possible motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Please.
Ms. Bailey, Ms. Jordan, I, I applaud you for the nearly century of good work in my neighborhood.
Oh, thank you.
So, it would be my honor to make the motion for approval for the designation. And I thank you again for your commitment to the community.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Motion's been made. Please cast your votes. Motion carries.
And that matter goes forward to the city council on May twentieth.
Thank you. We now move item number forty, which is the DIR thirty-three seven seven seven. The applicant owner is the city of Las Vegas, is to designate Lorenzi Park as a historic district on the city of Las Vegas Historic Property Register, as approved by the Historic Preservation Commission, at seventy-two, or seven-hundred-and-twenty Twin Lakes Drive. Staff report please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This item comes before you, also with the recommendation of the Historic Preservation Commission, in this case as an historic district, based upon not only the structures, but the grounds at Lorenzi Park, and also the persons associated with the history of the park and the events that have occurred there. The findings can be made for this to be designated on the Historic Property Registry, and the staff and the HPC recommend approval.
Thank you. Now I'd like to clear the public hearing open. Anyone in attendance wishing to speak on the matter, please approach the microphone and give your name and address for the record. Seeing none, we'll declare the public hearing closed and turn it over to the planning commission for discussion and possible motion.
Mr. Chairman, I think this is a great idea. First staff, what's significant, making it a historic district, which I believe it is, I mean, there's phenomenal elements here. Is there anything else that goes along with that district's designation? I know we've had this in the discussion in the past.
Mr. Chairman and, and Vice Chair, what this allows for is for seeking additional funding for the restoration of the buildings on the site. It assists with the signage and other matters with regard to the structures on the site. As you know, the park is under reconstruction at this time. Additionally, it will ensure that the structures on the site would not be, although it's under the control of the city, it would ensure that those structures cannot be modified or destroyed without review by the Historic Preservation Commission. So it is both a, a funding and a preservation issue. I would note that where there is a rededication or other ceremony that is coming up in the next couple of months, and we will be, the HPC has also decided during that event, which I will notify the commission of, they will be taking oral histories of persons who have a history or a story to tell at Lorenzi Park, and that'll be part of the progress as we restore this historic park.
That's great. Is there no other comments? I'll make a motion to follow staff's recommendation for approval.
Motion's been made. Please cast your vote.
Is that a historic vote?
Post. Motion passes.
And that also goes forward to the city council on May twentieth.
We now move item forty-one, which is citizens' participation. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must, must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the planning commission. No subject may be acted upon by the planning commission unless that subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium and give your name for the record. The amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time any speaker may be allowed, may be limited. Anyone wishing to speak under the citizens' participation portion? Seeing none, we'll declare the citizens' participation portion closed. And that concludes this evening's meeting. Thank you very much. Meeting's adjourned.